Hey, babes. Bennett? What are you doing?
The hour of 6:30 having come and gone, I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, January 14, 2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Bennett? Alder Conklin?
Present.
Curry?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Evers?
Here.
Field?
Here.
Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Govendrajan?
Here.
Uguere?
Here.
Herring Tim McKinnney?
Present.
Knox?
Here.
Vladimir Burris?
Here.
Madison?
Here.
Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Miazze?
Present.
Rommel?
Present.
Tischler?
Yeah, I'm here.
Vervier?
Here.
Vidiver?
Here.
Wajalia Zixkuze? Alder Bennett? All right, Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. As usual, I will remind us that we are all here to do the business of the people of the city of Madison and ask that we do that with grace and kindness and that in particular, all concerned refrain from using any profanity in your remarks at any time tonight. We'll also remind us that while those here for public comment are allotted three minutes and alders are allotted 10 minutes of time to speak, no one is obligated to take that entire time. And in fact, brevity is appreciated and encouraged. With that, I will move on to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on tonight's agenda? Alder Vidiver?
Item 74, I'm an employee of Department of Health Services, and that will not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Uguere?
Item 45, Legislature 86356 involving housing initiatives. A co-developer of that item is Hope Community Capital Corporation. My consulting company, IOSC, has done some small projects with Hope in the past, but not in Madison or Dane County, and I have no financial interest in this particular project. The principle of Hope is a social friend through my church. This relationship will have no impact on my decision.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other disclosures or recusals on items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Figueroa Cole?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two items which alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda items, different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Agenda items that are supermajority items and the supermajority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a local or exclusion is requested. Legislature File 86528 authorizing City of Madison mayor and alders to encourage donations to the Abundant Life Christian School Emergency Fund, 14 votes are required. Legislature File 86257 approving Park Commission resident appointment to the Habitat Storship Subcommittee of the Board of Parks Commissioners, 14 votes are required. Legislature Item 86624 Designating City of Madison Polling Locations for the 2025 Spring Primary, 14 votes are required. Legislature File 86666 Establishing in-Person Absentee Voting Locations for the 2025 Spring Primary and Election, 14 votes are required. Listener Item 58525 is a substitute amending the Engineering Major Streets and Stormwater Utility Adopted Capital Budgets to transfer existing GO budget authority from the Stormwater Utilities Citywide Flood Mitigation Program to the Mineral Point Road Project and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an amendment to the contract between Madison and Mid and Hunt for additional design engineering services for the Mineral Point Road Pavement Replacement Project. That is, 15 votes are required. Legislature Item 86354 Authorizing the Economic Development Division to submit and if awarded, accept a grant of up to $250,000 from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Small Businesses Development Grant, and if awarded, amending the 2025 Economic Development Division's operating budget by up to $250,000 and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a contract with WDC for the grant, 15 votes are required. Legislature File 86251 is a substitute amending the Parks Division 2025 Adopted Operating Budget to remove the pay parking pilot and associated revenues and expenditures, 15 votes are required. In the agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Legislature File 86356 Awarding up to $4,160,495 in Federal Home Investments Partnerships Program grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, as allocated to the City of Madison by the American Rescue Plan to Housing Initiatives, Inc., to support the development of 16 units of affordable housing and supportive services and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into agreement to implement the development project. The recommendation from the Community Development Block Grant Committee was to adopt. Legislature File 86357 Approving a Loan Up to $300,000 to the Urban League of Great Madison from the Community Facilities Loan Program to help finance and build out of a shared commercial kitchen at the Black Business Hub located at 2352 South Park Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign an agreement for that purpose. The recommendation from the Community Development Block Grant was to adopt. Legislature File 85327 Amending Section 5.20 of the Madison General Ordinances to modify the Police Civilian Oversight Board Appointment Process. Report of the Oversight Board, the recommendation is to refer to the 226 meeting, originally was to 27, so the change was to refer to the 2026 meeting. I will be back in common council on March 11. Legislature 86213 Amending Section 10.056, 9.136, 38.07, Section 8, and 33.27 of the Madison General Ordinances to eliminate the Street Use Staff Commission and assign their duties to relevant city staff. The report of the Street Use Staff Commission was to adopt the substitute. Agenda items excluded by, one, requests of alders, or, two, speakers registered by noon on January 14. Legislature Item 86464 Approving Plans and Specifications and Authorizing the Board of Public Works to Advertise and Receive Bids for the Imagination Center at Rendell Park, speakers are registered. Legislature Item 86169 Authorizing the eventual forgiveness of $1,613,365 of debt held by Madison Ice, Inc., for the Madison Ice Arena at 725 Forward Drive and Hartmeyer Ice Arena at 1810 and 1834 Commercial Avenue. Authorizing determination of existing land contracts for both ice arenas with Madison Ice, Hartmeyer LLC, and Madison Ice, MIA, LLC. Authorizing the fee simple sale of Hartmeyer Ice Arena to East Madison Ice Collective and the fee simple sale of Madison Ice Arena to Madison, Inc., for $1. Authorizing a fundraising requirement of approximately $3 million by East Madison Ice Collective for capital improvements to Hartmeyer Ice Arena and authorizing additional terms related to the negotiation of the city's relationship to the ice arenas we have registered speakers. Items introduced from the floor, Legislature File 86741 Authorizing a non-competitive purchase of goods from Remedy Alliance, Inc., for 3MG Revival Intracernal Naloxone Spray and Preassembled Injectable Naloxone Kits to support increased access to overdose reversal medication through 2024. The recommendation is to move this to finance on January 21, 2025, and back to common council on January 28, 2025. At the time of this agenda, considering that was created, there was no other corrections. Mayor, I didn't check the registrant list, so there might be another ones there.
Thank you, President Figueroa Cole. We also have registrants wishing to speak on items 47 and 63, so we will exclude those as well. Excuse me, on 63, it's not a registrant, but that's the reconsideration, and so we have to exclude it to vote on reconsideration and then take up the item.
Thank you.
Are there other items that alders would like to have excluded from tonight's consent agenda? Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. Not an exclusion, I maybe should have done this earlier on abstentions and recusals, but I would like to be noted as abstaining on number 47.
Alder, that item will be excluded, so you can abstain at the time of the vote.
Pardon me?
That item will be excluded from the consent agenda, so you can abstain at the time of the vote. But the clerk will make a note.
I can't just say a vote that would be recorded without pulling it off?
It's already being excluded, Alder, because we have a registrant wishing to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Are there any additional requests for exclusion from the consent agenda at this Seeing none, let me go through that one more time just to make sure. The following items are supermajority items and will be recorded as unanimous votes. Requiring 14 votes are items 10, 17, 43, and 44. Requiring 15 votes are items 49, 54, and 63. On items 45 and 46, the recommendation is to adopt. On item 56, the recommendation is to re-refer to the PCOB Policy and Procedure Subcommittee on 226 and back to council on 311. On item 60, the recommendation is to adopt the substitute. The following items will be excluded from the consent agenda, items 33, 47, 50, and 63. We have one introduction from the floor. Seeing nothing additional, then, President Figueroa Cole, a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda, and we will move on to public comment. Is there any objection from the floor or the body to taking up public comment on item 50 first, as we have quite a few folks, some of whom would like to go actually practice on ice tonight? Seeing no objection, we'll start with public comment on item 50 and then circle back to the additional items. So on item 50, this is authorizing eventual forgiveness of debt held by Madison Ice, Inc., regarding Madison Ice Arena and Hartmeyer Ice Arena, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Our first registrant wishing to speak is Lincoln Jerky from District 12, to be followed by Amy Brinza, to be followed by Morgan Burris Desert. Or Dessert, sorry, I can't remember how to pronounce her name. Do we have Lincoln? No? Do we have Amy Brinza? Please come forward. And you, just as to know, you can come to either side of the dais, there are microphones on both sides.
Good. My name is Amy Brinza, and I'm speaking today in support of this item and specifically keeping Hartmeyer and Ice, Inc. My son Ben, this is Ben, is a U6 Patriot hockey player. This is his third season with the Patriots, and I'm not sure that he would be the same kid without hockey in his life. Hockey provides much more than exercise for these kids. He has learned to work hard, have respect for his teammates and coaches, and how to be a team player and friend. These are skills that he has learned at a young age that will translate to success in his future. It also has brought our family closer to our community and allowed us to meet new friends that will likely be our friends for many more years. Hartmeyer has become our home away from home. Some would say hockey is an elitist, rich sport. However, I would disagree. If you dig deeper into the organizations that use these facilities, you will find that they have a large DEI aspect to their programs and support a diverse group of people and backgrounds. Specifically, the Patriots fundraise and seek grants to make hockey as affordable as possible and welcome everyone, no matter their income, skill, or background. These programs provide a community benefit for all, and it would be a tremendous loss if we didn't have this opportunity for these kids who are our future. These facilities provide a recreational good to the community, similar to what the 280 city parks provide, and were actually parks for a large portion of the city's history. They continue to be these kids' parks in the winter. Due to current winter trends and weather, we can't consistently skate outdoors. Not passing this resolution is like taking two parks away from the community. It is my understanding that the city prioritizes recreation and parkland. Can you look at kids like Ben in the eye and say, "I took your recreation or parks away today"?
Thank you. Please, folks, we're never going to get through the evening if you applaud every speaker. Please do not applaud. Right? It's going to be a long night. We have rules against expressions of support from the gallery, so I, please tell people that you appreciate them, but please don't applaud. All right, our next registrant is Morgan Burris Dessert of D6, excuse me, District 6, to be followed by Skylar Rolfs. Morgan?
Hello, good evening, Mayor Rhodes Conway and all of the alders as well as public -- oh, it's not on. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor Rhodes Conway, all our alders, and everyone who's gathered here today. My name is Morgan Burris Dessert, and I currently play for the Madison Dragons, though I've had a long history of playing and skating for the Patriots. I, sorry, when I was around six, I got diagnosed with scoliosis and was told that it would be difficult for me to do a lot of sports, to stay on my feet for too long, to run around too much, or to jump around and stuff like that. One of the sports the doctor recommended was hockey. I started skating when I was around seven, and I've met some of the best friends I ever will there. Hartmeyer is like my second home. It's not just like an ice rink. Every little drip in the ceiling, every little hole on the floor, all of it has its special personality, hence the name, it has its own heart. I've met some of the best people I ever will there that I've continued being friends with and have had some of the best and hardest experiences I ever will. I've learned to win, to lose, and to accept that graciously. I've learned that you need hard work in order to be successful in some things and that you need to practice and actually try. I've also learned that even when things can get hard, it's easier to tough it out than to just give up. There were a couple times where I wondered if I should stop doing hockey, and I've had a lot of problems with stress, but over time I've realized that when I'm on the ice, everything gets canceled out for just fun, friends, and working hard. Even with my stress, when I'm on the ice, it feels like it's not there. It feels like I can just be the person I am and hang out with the people I love being around. In short, I just wanted to say that I'm speaking in favor of keeping Hartmeyer open and releasing its debt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Skylar Rolfs of District 15, to be followed by Ben Taylor Feldman. Skylar?
I choose not to speak.
Okay, thank you. Then Ben Taylor Feldman of District 6, to be followed by Karen Hints, to be followed by Emily Demmer. Ben?
So, yeah, my name is Ben, and I've been playing hockey for like my whole life, and obviously I support the resolution, and I think most people here do. I'm not too educated on the whole situation, but I love getting out there. I love getting out there whenever I can, and if the rinks close, I don't think I'd be able to get out there as much, along with my teammates, along with all the other clubs that go to these rinks. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be able to play hockey, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next registrant is Karen Hints of District 15, to be followed by Emily Demmer, to be followed by Johannes Peter Wallman. Karen?
Hi, my name is Karen Hints. I'm the mother of a young hockey player who uses both Hartmeyer and Madison Ice Arenas. I spend a lot of time at these rinks, even though I've never played hockey. In fact, the first hockey game I ever attended was at Hartmeyer when I was in high school. Fast forward a few decades later, and despite not being from a hockey family, I ended up with a daughter who started her path in hockey at the very same facility where I started my own. As a mom, I've witnessed firsthand the incredible benefits, both physical and mental, that participating in hockey has brought to my daughter. Hockey has a profoundly positive impact on her confidence and self-esteem. Early in her hockey career, one of her coaches explained to her team that hockey is a game of mistakes. It is a game in which you work to take advantage of your opponent's mistakes and at the same time do what you can to minimize time, do what you can to minimize the impact of your own. I found that extremely profound. Participating in this sport has taught her resilience, discipline, and the value of teamwork. She's learned to set goals, overcome challenges, and celebrate her and her teammates' achievements, no matter how small. As she's acquired new skills on the ice, I've seen her become more self-assured and confident in her ability to master new skills in other environments, particularly at school and in social interactions. And we can see this in the motto that she and her friends have adopted at school, which is, "We can do hard things." But it's not just hockey that provides the types of mental and physical benefits like this. The ice rinks serve as a hub for many community programs in figure skating, adaptive skating, sled hockey, and adult hockey. It benefits not just our children, but the entire community, by offering a safe and inclusive environment, where people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities can come together to stay active and build community spirit. The fact is, our ice rinks are in dire need of improvements, and we risk losing this invaluable community resource. So adoption of the ice arenas resolution is a real critical step that ensures these ice rinks will continue to serve our community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Emily Demmer of District Nineteen, representing Madison Ice, Inc., to be followed by Johannes Peter Wallman, to be followed by Eliza Rhoadhamel. Emily?
Hello. My name is Emily Deemer, an employee of Madison Ice, Inc. for fifteen years. Our executive director, Stu Taylor, is at a parent night function with his son, so is unable to attend. I will be representing MII staff tonight. I am the former Learn to Skate Director and the current Synchronized Skating Director. As an MII staff member involved in the daily programming of the rinks, I want to present information on services we provide and populations we serve. MII was founded with the mission to provide skating for all with community as the focus. We schedule and rent ice for the well-known user groups of figure skating, hockey, sled hockey, and broom ball clubs. However, in addition to the user groups, Madison Ice, Inc. provides consistent programming for the general public to access ice skating at both rinks, including: Open hockey, sessions for anyone wanting to play pickup hockey; Public skates, time for anyone to get on the ice for exercise and fun; Learn to Skate classes, offered five days a week, designed for first-time skaters and those developing fundamentals; Open to all ages, parent-taught classes to beginning adults and everything in between; Serving two-thousand-plus skaters annually, providing free skate rental, awarding ten to twelve scholarships per year for youth skaters who self-describe as receiving free school lunch. We organize weekly adaptive Learn to Skate free classes and instruction for skaters with cognitive, emotional, behavioral, or physical disabilities. We host in-staff skating activities for community organizations, church groups, school classes, Girl Scouts, homeschool groups, private events for birthday parties, family gatherings, work outings. We run synchronized skating teams, adult hockey leagues, and tournaments. MII hosts annual charitable events for community needs and donate programs and services to area nonprofits. We offer learn-to-teach and volunteer opportunities for experienced teenage skaters to assist beginners. I would like to provide information on the populations we serve. We do not ask identifying details of participants, but from volunteered and self-described information, I work with skaters and families who: speak English as a second language, receive free and reduced school lunch or benefits from the county and state, have cognitive, emotional, behavioral, or physical disabilities, struggle with drug or alcohol use or incarceration, use public transportation to access our programs, who are members of the LGBTQ+ community, senior citizens, part of foster care, first-generation citizens, students of Edgewood College, UW, Madison College, and trade schools. It is a privilege to work with the citizens of Madison.
About thirty seconds left.
I hope to continue to provide the joy of skating and lessons for life on the ice to our community for decades to come. I'm available for questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Johannes Peter Wallman of District Six, to be followed by Eliza Rhoadhamel, to be followed by Sarah Sarar.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of my daughter, Clea, who unfortunately can't be here right now because she is at hockey practice at Hartmire as we're speaking and playing with the U-eight Patriots team. Hockey is the absolute highlight of a week at this age. There's two practices and a game most weeks, and one of the things that has taught her is perseverance. For the younger kids, one of the first things that you learn when you play hockey is how to fall a lot, and not to be afraid of falling, because falling is important so that you then, you know, get yourself up, pick yourself up again. And that is just a tremendous life lesson. And I also urge you to support the resolution, because Hartmire really is not in good shape, and it shows decades of underinvestment. I moved to Madison in 2012 and played in the league at Hartmire for a number of years, and it was immediately clear that this was a facility that had not been kept up well for, again, I think there's decades that go into that. And unfortunately, after a few years, the league that I played in moved to Middleton Ice Arena, and frankly, the facilities were significantly better. Our children don't have that opportunity to just pick up and move. So I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next registrant is Eliza Rhoadhamel of District Nineteen, to be followed by Sarah Sarar, to be followed by Laura Franzin Elmer. Eliza?
Hello.
Go ahead.
So my name is Eliza Rhoadhamel. I started figure skating with the Learn to Skate program when I was four years old at MIA. As I got better, I began taking private lessons with a coach who still coaches me. When I was twelve, I began speed skating at the Pettit National Ice Center, and since then, I've become a short-track speed skating national champion, East Olympic silver medalist, and am currently on an international travel USA speed skating team. Without learning to skate at the Madison Ice Rinks, I would never have been able to have this opportunity to get so far in this sport and achieve what I have so far. And skating has defined who I am and what my future goals are, and so I will always be thankful for what the Madison Ice Rinks have given me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sarah Sarar of Cambridge, Wisconsin, representing Madison Ice, to be followed by Laura Franzin Elmer, to be followed by Evan Forsmo. Sarah?
My name is Sarah Sarar. Can you hear me okay? My name is Sarah Sarar, and my son Liam attends the Adaptive Skating Program. He's twelve years old, and he has Soto Syndrome, which is a rare disorder that causes autism and epilepsy, among other life-limiting problems. He has low muscle tone that causes fatigue, poor depth perception and balance, which erodes his confidence and ability to keep up with his peers. And adaptive skating provides the opportunity for building that muscle balance, goal-directed movement, and the chance to talk to anyone and everyone without his mom breathing down his neck. He's gone from sitting on the sidelines, on the seals, a lot, all over the ice, to using a walker, not sitting at all, and he's even learning to jump. He has the opportunity for fitness, sensory input, a sense of community, and using the social skills that have always been difficult for him. Adaptive skating comes at no expense to families of individuals with special needs. There are already astronomical financial constraints for families like ours, so an activity like adaptive skating is invaluable. We're currently waiting on a heart, liver, and kidney transplant for my husband, Liam's dad. We don't have the luxury of financial and health security and stability, and we don't know what to expect some days. But this is one activity that Liam can expect. This is one activity that he knows he will get to go to every Saturday morning. We can anticipate and then realize his love for skating. And every parent knows that when our kids are happy, we're happy. When our kids are emotionally regulated, that equals an emotionally regulated parent, and we know how that regulation affects our health. I also know that Liam may never go to college, run a business, or even own an ice rink, but we do know he will challenge those to be kind, authentic, do those hard things, and treat others and themselves with respect.
About thirty seconds left.
And it's amazing to think that ice time can do all of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Laura Franzin Elmer of District Twenty, representing Madison Ice, Inc. and FSC Madison, to be followed by Evan Forsmo, to be followed by Tina Carlson. Laura?
Hi. Thank you for having me. My name is Laura Franzin Elmer. I am the president-elect for the Madison Ice, Inc. board. I'll be assuming that role in May. And I think the first thing I want to say is how proud I am of all the individuals that are there, speaking up publicly, and what an amazing experience this is for our youth to see how our local government works. My own son is there in person with his hockey team to speak, and I'm proud of them all for showing up and showing their support in the way that they have, as well as everyone else in every one of the user groups that we sponsor at the ice arenas. Predominantly, I wanted to speak so that I'm accessible to you for any questions that you, any of the Alders or Mayor, have of me in representing Madison Ice, Inc. So if there are any questions at the end, I'm available for that. In addition, I just want to say, like what the prior speaker just said, our mission has always been to ensure that Madison's ice rinks are available and accessible for all skaters in the community. I know that there is some discussion about whether or not we deserve this break in the money that's owed to the city being paid over the course of the next fifteen years. But part of our mission statement in making ice accessible is keeping our prices modest and at market value or lower, and being able to offer opportunities for free, like adaptive skating. In order to do that, we know we could raise prices and pay off the debt by simply raising prices. It's simply not the path that's in the best interest of the community and not the path that we want to take, because we are a 501(c)(3). We're not in this for profit. We're in this for the love of our community, for our sport, for our ice arenas, and as the one comment was made, of every drip and every crack, it's home to us. It is important to us and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Evan Forsmo of Monona, to be followed by Tina Carlson, to be followed by Deborah Nachazell. Evan?
Hi. My name is Evan Forsmo. I'm a seventh grader on the Bannamay Patriot Team. I'm here to help the Madison Hartmire Ice Arena stay open. I've been playing at Hartmire for many years, and I have probably spent half of my life at this rink. This would mean so much to me if you can help keep Hartmire Ice Rink open and keep people having fun. Thank you so much for your time to listen to my speech.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tina Carlson of District Seven, to be followed by Deborah Nachazell, to be followed by Allison Ryman. Tina?
Good evening, City Council members. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak today. My name is Tina Carlson. I live in West Madison. I am an adult figure skater, and I'm the mother of a figure skater. My daughter started taking Learn to Skate lessons at Madison Ice Arena a few years ago, and I decided to try skating, too. What started as a way to spend time with my child, sorry, has turned into one of the best things I've ever done. Skating has not only brought me closer to my daughter, but it's helped me to grow in ways I never expected. Skating has made me so much stronger physically and mentally. It's a great workout, but it's also a good way to clear my head and push myself in ways I wouldn't have thought possible. If someone had told me three years ago that I would be jumping and spinning with knives on my feet, I would have laughed. I have overcome crippling performance anxiety to compete, not just with my synchronized skating team, but also individually, and I have made the most amazing friends. I have found a second family in the skaters, coaches, and parents at the rinks. We cheer each other on, we support each other through tough times, and we celebrate victories together, both on and off the ice. And it's not just me, and this is why I'm crying. Skating has had a huge impact on my daughter. This is Lilith. Lilith struggles with sensory processing difficulty, anxiety, perfectionism, OCD, and more difficulties stemming from autism. The different dresses and practice clothes that she wears for skating have helped her body to get used to the way more fabrics feel on her skin. When we started skating, she would wear only one brand of leggings and one style of shirt. Today, her closet is filled with all types of fabrics and all styles of clothes. She is learning how to work with all kinds of different personalities, whether it's the thirteen other girls on her synchronized skating team, or just interacting with others at the rink. She willingly gets up at 6:00 a.m. every Saturday to go to the rink because she's excited to see her synchro teammates. Skating has helped her build confidence in herself. Through skating, she has learned that even though not everything comes quickly or easily, she can do hard things. Skating has taught her to try new things, push past her fears, and keep going even when things get tough. I have seen her grow so much through skating. Even with all of the rinks in the surrounding areas, it can be hard to find ice time. Madison and Hartmire Ice Arena offer the most options for figure skaters to practice and also host hockey teams, sled hockey, Learn to Skate, adaptive skating, and tournaments and competition. In March, Madison Ice Arena is hosting the Midwest Adult Sectional Figure Skating Competition. Adult figure skaters from all over the Midwest will come to Madison, and they will stay in our hotels, they will eat at our restaurants, and they will visit our shops and spend their money. Allowing the sale and debt forgiveness opens the door for more of these large events that boost Madison's economy. I'm asking you to please consider what these rinks mean to all of us and support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Deborah Nachazell of Wanaquie, to be followed by Allison Ryman, to be followed by Jessica Hermsen. Deborah?
My name is Deborah Nachazell, and thank you for allowing me to speak in support of the Madison Ice Arena's proposed debt forgiveness plan. This is my granddaughter, Niaja. Niaja is not only navigating the challenges of being a teenager, but also those of autism, depression, and anxiety. These Madison Ice Arenas provide Niaja with a place to thrive. I've heard several discussions over the last few months about our surrounding communities that build and continue to expand their rinks and the potential opportunities these spaces could provide for our skaters. We actually live just minutes from the Wanaquie rink, and this is where Niaja began her skating experience. Despite the rink's proximity to our home, opportunities for figure skaters who surpass the very basic levels of skating do not exist at the Wanaquie rink. The only skating times offered at that rink are two weekdays during school hours, from one to three. As you might guess, for school-aged children, it's just not an option. Additionally, the Wanaquie community offers no figure skating club to support and develop figure skaters. As a matter of fact, if you go to the Wanaquie Ice Pond website, inquiries regarding a figure skating club direct you to the Madison Figure Skating Club. The Madison rinks are Niaja's sanctuary. She is in her fourth year as a Madison Ice Diamond. Skating on a synchronized team has given her the chance to develop friendships and to feel accepted in spite of her differences. For Niaja, these rinks are a lifeline. Skating provides her with structure, routine, and a space to challenge herself in a way that feels safe. The other skaters and their parents have offered our non-typical family acceptance and friendship, and for that, we are forever grateful. I urge the entire community to support this initiative, so we can preserve these opportunities for all children and adults who need safe, supportive places to grow, develop, and find themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Allison Ryman of District Five, to be followed by Jessica Hermsen, to be followed by Indiana Hermsen. Allison?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Allison Ryman, and I'm a resident of Madison's near west side. I have two daughters, including my daughter, Mira, who's here with me tonight, and all three of us are active members and competitors with the Figure Skating Club of Madison and the Madison Ice Diamond Synchronized Skating Teams. I asked to speak tonight for two reasons in support of this ice arena resolution. First, I wanted to share a little bit of my own personal story about the importance of local rinks. I also want to talk a little bit about why I think supporting these rinks is important for our community. I started figure skating in 1988 when I was ten years old, after watching the Winter Olympics. My family was just about to move to a small town in a new state, and I really, really wanted to figure skate. And I was lucky in that that new town had two local rinks and a very active figure skating club. So we moved to that new town where I knew nobody. I started to learn to skate. I started a Learn to Skate program at the very bottom in Basic One. Honestly, at 10 years old, kind of old to be in Basic One, but nonetheless, I started. I ended up sticking with it, continued skating through high school, and started coaching towards the end of high school and then through college and beyond into my mid-20s. Skating was one of the most formative parts of my middle school and high school years, and coaching helped me pay for a lot of my college education. But I doubt I would have done any of that if there hadn't been rinks close to my home when I moved to that new community. Now, as an adult, I have two girls in figure skating, and I personally returned to the sport in the last year. My family is very lucky to live about halfway between MIA and Hartmeyer, and it's a real privilege to be able to have both of those options available to us. But I know that there are folks who are not centrally located in Madison, where one or the other is really important to them, and that access and proximity is very important. So it's important that we have both of these rinks. I also think that protecting these rinks is important for our community in a number of respects, including, as others have indicated, to make rinks accessible to people from all walks of life. Madison is, as we all know, a very diverse place, and we see that in the rinks Learn to Skate program, and those become the building blocks of our hockey teams and our figure skaters. If those programs didn't continue right here in Madison, I'm confident that there are a lot of families who live near these rinks who wouldn't be able to do them just because of the access issues created by traffic, time demands, and general barriers if you can't get to it quickly.
You have about 30 seconds left.
I'm also proud that the rinks have programs for differently-abled athletes, as others have mentioned. I've skated in rinks all over the Midwest, and I think that we are quite unique in having sled hockey programs right here, adaptive Learn to Skate, and this is something the City of Madison should be very proud of and put its support behind to ensure that those programs continue right here at home. So for all those reasons, I'm here to ask that the Common Council vote in support of the ice arena resolution, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jessica Hermsen of Middleton, representing the Figure Skating Club of Madison, East Madison Ice Collective, and Madison Ice Inc., to be followed by Indiana Hermsen, to be followed by Aida Turteva. Jessica?
Hi, my name is Jessica Hermsen. Thank you for hearing us tonight and for your ear at previous meetings. I'll try to diversify my message for those of you who've heard me speak before. I have two kids in figure skating. I figure skate with the Figure Skating Club of Madison, and it was through Figure Skating Club of Madison that we got our first exchange student, and we are now on our fifth. I represent three organizations impacted by the ice arena resolution. I'm on the boards of the Figure Skating Club for six years, East Madison Ice Collective for two years, and recently joined Madison Ice Inc. Having been in at least one of Madison's ice rinks six days a week throughout the year for the past eight years, I stepped up to support these rinks and make them better. The Figure Skating Club of Madison serves all of Madison and its surrounding communities. We are not bound by address, and we are the only club in Madison. We have upwards of 300 active members, and we buy two hours of ice six days a week all year. Every season is our season. Our membership is diverse, and through careful management of our organization, we are able to ensure figure skating remains accessible, but not without Madison's ice rinks. Our organization invests in the programming at the ice rinks. Our skaters go from students to coaches. We work public ice and coach and volunteer coach for the skating school and adaptive programs. One of our two nationally sanctioned figure skating competitions, the Madison Open, pulls in competitors from the entire state, as well as the surrounding states and officials from across the nation. And for the past couple of years, we have been able to fold Special Olympics into our competition. We host an annual ice show that, for cost, young skaters in the Community Learn to Skate Program have the opportunity to perform and demonstrate their newly fashioned skills. We work diligently to make and keep skating accessible in Madison and give back to the ice rinks we call home. Our organization would not be where it is today if it were not for these ice rinks being community-led by a nonprofit organization focused on keeping them open for the community to ensure all skaters have ice. Every second of ice outside school hours is used throughout the City of Madison and surrounding communities. Madison ice rinks are the only facilities that offer diversity of ice, including figure skating, Learn to Skate, synchronized skating, sled hockey, adaptive skating, as well as public skating. No other ice facilities offer as much community-based programming as Madison Ice Arena and Hartmeyer Ice Arena. Verona, Sun Prairie, Wanaquie, McFarland offer very little Learn to Skate options, figure skating, and community skating. Middleton Ice Rink offers none of these things. Something unique and special has been built here, and this is our something to be proud of, even more than a fancy new building. We are all non-political volunteers focused on doing the right thing, which is keeping these historic community facilities open for the entire skating community. We are on the ground at the ice rinks pushing up our sleeves and working hard to make them better. Please support the resolution.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Indiana Hermsen of Middleton, to be followed by Aida Turteva, to be followed by Asher Hermsen. Indiana?
Hi, my name is Indy Hermsen, and I'm 13. I've skated at the HIA and MIA Madison Ice Rink since I was six years old. Skating has helped me so much with finding my place. I found my role models in community. Community is a big thing for me. I also do gymnastics, and the gym is another community. But when I come to the rink, I feel like Abbaa. I have so many good memories from the annual skate show, and I've come so far with my skating and getting deeper connections with the people in my club. I currently skate 10 hours per week. When I use my magnificent math skills, I've spent more than 4,000 hours at these ice rinks. I set a goal to reach the U.S. Figure Skating Gold in skating skills by age 12, and guess what? I did it! I also helped volunteer as an assistant Learn to Skate coach in helping younger kids discover skating, like the teenagers who helped me when I was younger. I hope that the rink stays open because I haven't just come far in skating, but because of skating, I've become the person I am today. I'm in Hartmeyer, I'm at home, and I love it, so please vote to keep us skating.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Aida Turteva of Middleton, representing the Figure Skating Club of Madison, to be followed by Asher Hermsen, to be followed by Leah Sugar. Aida?
Hello, everybody. My name is Aida, and I'm a figure skater. Also, I'm an exchange student from Kazakhstan. I came here like six months ago. So I've been doing figure skating for over six years in Kazakhstan, and after I came here to us, I continue doing it here. And I really like it. I really enjoy every session in this rink. I participated in Madison Open, and I helped during the competition. Also, every Saturday, I also volunteer on Madison Arena. I develop myself and develop others. I teach children how to skate, and they really love it, like I do. They're really inspired and really excited to come here to the ice back every single, every next week to learn something new from me. And I don't know, it's actually, ice became something really significant for them, and I'm really proud of them, and I'm really proud of myself. And I really, in conclusion, I would say that this ice unites all of people, and I really hope that it will always be like this. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Asher Hermsen of Middleton, representing the Figure Skating Club of Madison, to be followed by Leah Sugar, to be followed by Rick Coilho. Asher?
Hi, my name is Asher Hermsen, and I am only 10 years old. I figure skate with the Figure Skating Club of Madison. I like working towards competitions and showcase events where I get to do theater on ice. I'm currently working on landing an axle, and I like skating with my partner, Pippa. This past summer, I skated Nationals in San Jose, California. I started skating when I was three and a half years old. I didn't like it at first, but since my older sister skated a lot, I was at the rink anyway. While at the rink, I got to know the people who worked there, and they showed me many things, like how the ice rink works. I know where the lights are, I know how to rent out skates, and I know what happens in the crossover's pro shop. I can't wait to drive the Zamboni and work at the concessions when I'm old enough. I've always felt I belong at the ice rinks. I skate almost every day, and I have a lot of friends at the rink. At one time, I was one of the only boy figure skaters, but now we have a larger group called the Boy Crew. I like that when I go to the ice rink almost every day, that there is someone there I know and people who know me. I have a rink family. Both MIA and HIA are home to me. Please keep the ice rinks open.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Leah Sugar of Kensington Drive, to be followed by Rick Coilho, to be followed by Jim Feldman. Leah?
Hi, I'm Leah Sugar, and this is Sorin Sugar. And we live on the north side, just a couple minutes from Hartmeyer. My husband grew up on the east side of Madison, and we met at East High School. Both my husband and I learned to skate at Tenny Park Lagoon. Unfortunately, as we learned last year, outdoor rinks are becoming an unreliable option for ice skating. When my husband was in high school, he decided to try out for the East High Hockey Team, not having ever played organized hockey as a child. Making that team and subsequently playing for East High is one of his most cherished high school memories. When we had two sons, my husband thought that maybe they would like to play hockey like he did, but that was not to be. During the 2022 Olympics, Sorin, who was six at the time, watched Nathan Chen win gold in the men's figure skating competition and told me, "That's what I want to do." We had a lot of other activities going on, so I put it off, but he kept asking. After looking into it and seeing that he could Learn to Skate at Hartmeyer, only five minutes from our house, through the Learn to Skate program, I signed him up. He took his first lessons on hockey skates, but soon switched to figure skates. Within just a couple of months, he had joined the accelerated Learn to Skate program and was zooming around the ice. He had truly found his place. Now, almost three years later, he has graduated from Learn to Skate and skates five to six days a week with his wonderful coach, Emily, who you heard speak earlier. For Sorin, Hartmeyer and Madison Ice are his happy places. School has never been a place where Sorin has felt completely at home, but at the ice rinks, he has a group of friends who see him as he truly is and accept him fully. As Asher said, being a boy in figure skating isn't always easy. There are times when you're the only boy in a competition of 100 girls, but that has never been a problem for Sorin at the Madison Ice Rinks. He and his friends, the Boy Crew, also these boys over here, feel fully accepted. This year, on Sorin's urging, my older son, Bodhi, and I signed up for adult Learn to Skate at Hartmeyer. It is more fun than I ever expected and a wonderful thing to do as a family. We are so excited about the opportunity that East Madison Ice Collective will bring to Hartmeyer on the north side. The current facilities are inadequate and can sometimes even be dangerous. When the weather is humid, the roof drips and leaving lumps on the ice. The members of the Board of East Madison Ice Collective are experienced, connected, and care deeply about our community. We are confident that they can breathe new life into a rink that has meant so much to our family and our neighborhood. Did you want to say something?
The ice rink has brought me a lot of joy, and I really like it, and I think we should keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Rick Coilho, sorry if I'm mispronouncing, of District 6, to be followed by Jim Feldman, to be followed by Rachel Neal. Do we have Rick?
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm here to speak on behalf of my son Everett. We are a near-east side family living close to Hartmeyer. Everett has been, first, learned to skate with Madison Ice Inc. three years ago and has been a Patriot ever since. I think previous speakers have certainly addressed the benefits for our children. I would also like to speak to the benefits for our adult community members, echoing a previous speaker. I also began a journey with Madison's Adult Learn to Skate, and that journey has led me to adult hockey, a pastime that has helped me expand my health, both mental and physical. So I'm going to keep it short. I want to encourage adoption of this resolution and support of forgiving this debt, and, you know, it's a resource for this entire community, all ages, and I think the East Madison Ice Collective has the potential to turn Hartmeyer into something we can be even prouder of. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jim Feldman of District 6, to be followed by Rachel Neal, to be followed by Pippa Neal. Jim?
Thank you all for the chance to be here tonight and I'm here to speak in strong support of this resolution. I've got something a little bit different to say than what's been said before, and that is that a community ice rink is a public good, one that deserves public support. This resolution will allow the forgiveness of debt owed to the city for these rinks over the next 15 years if significant private funds can be raised to keep these rinks open, accessible, and operational. Public goods do come with a price, but these ice arenas and our investment in our children are worth it. In this case, the city's actually getting a terrific deal, maintaining the historically and culturally significant opportunities for skating for a fraction of what it might otherwise cost. Although I understand that $1.6 million in debt forgiveness is a significant amount for the city to forgive over the 15-year term that's been proposed, but it's actually a fraction of the cost of what has been saved to the city through the private ownership of these rinks and a fraction of the cost that other cities in our state have invested in ice arenas. For example, Jamesville's spending $17 million. To continue to provide the public good of skating at Hartmeyer, one of the few recreational facilities on the east side of Madison for our youth, it's going to cost about $3 million in needed repairs and upgrades. But we have citizens willing to raise this $3 million through the new nonprofit, the East Madison Ice Collective, without raising fees on the community user groups that are already paying fees to sustain these ice rinks, and also relieving the city of the need to use taxpayer dollars to fix this rink and to continue to provide the public good of a community-oriented skating opportunity. In short, this is a great deal for the city and a terrific public resource for our youth and our community. Now, some people have characterized this as a giveaway and that the city should have that land valuated for its value on the private real estate market rather than perpetrating this, quote, "giveaway" to a group of special interests. That isn't a fair characterization of this effort or the group of citizens working to maintain the public good of a community rink. No one is making a private profit from this resolution. Only a nonprofit group can run the rink for sports or recreational purposes. And the alternative to a community rink isn't a private real estate development. That's a false comparison. The alternative is a city with fewer publicly accessible recreational facilities and skating opportunities. This proposal and the EMIC Group is committed to continuing the tradition of public access to Hartmeyer through open ice, skate rentals, scholarships for hockey and other sports, adaptive skating programs, and more. You've heard a lot of testimony about those values tonight.
You have about 30 seconds.
There's a very real risk that Hartmeyer is going to become unusable. As a parent of a kid who's found his passion and focus on the ice like nowhere else, this seems like a nightmare scenario. Waiting for some kind of future mega-recreational development costing upwards of $30 million also doesn't seem realistic, and neither does foreclosing on this rink and turning it into some other kind of development. So I urge the Common Council to support this initiative and to keep the public good of a community rink in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Rachel Neal of Black Earth, to be followed by Pippa Neal, to be followed by Stephen Neal. Rachel?
Hi, I'm Rachel Neal, and I'm a member of the East Madison Ice Collective. Professionally, I serve as CEO of Carex Consulting Group, located right here in Madison, and I'm a mom to six of these noisy kids over here. I'm just going to get to the point and address a couple points that I think are key to this partnership. One, this resolution has safeguards built in for the City of Madison where the East Madison Ice Collective has to raise $3 million for Hartmeyer Ice Arena before any further actions are taken. This ensures financial accountability and commitment. Two, the resolution is designed to facilitate the success of the East Madison Ice Collective long-term. By avoiding the use of raised funds to pay off debt, the structure allows for a more effective capital campaign. Additionally, granting EMIC ownership of the building and land while maintaining a deed restriction will allow, I'm sorry, hold on. By avoiding the use of raised funds to pay off the debt, the structure allows for a more effective capital campaign. Additionally, granting EMIC ownership of the building and land while maintaining a deed restriction which requires that land can only be used for sports and recreational facility, provides the city with control over land usage, and supports the need for fundraising. While some have suggested that aiming for a larger, more ambitious sports complex, such a project would really require significant time and resources, this resolution does not preclude future or long-term plans, but rather supports the need to preserve and enhance our existing community ice arenas. Hartmeyer Ice Arena requires urgent repairs to remain operational and continue serving its user groups. Having this resolution passed and in place will allow for these updates to occur before Hartmeyer is at risk of not being operational. With the city's support, the East Madison Ice Collective is confident in our ability to raise the necessary $3 million to address the critical repairs at Hartmeyer Ice Arena, providing more than just a temporary fix. We thank the City of Madison for collaborating with us on a solution that not only ensures the continued operation of these rinks, but also sets them up for long-term success and urges the Common Council to pass the resolution supporting the Madison Ice Arenas tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Pippa Neal of Black Earth, representing the Figure Skating Club of Madison, to be followed by Stephen Neal, to be followed by Lincoln Birkey. Pippa?
My name is Pippa. The Madison ice rinks are so nice and special because I skate there almost every day. It makes me sad that them are breaking. As a Latina skater, I'm proud to be As a Latina skater, I'm proud to be part of a community where everyone feels welcome and supported, no matter who they are. Please help us save our rinks so kids like me can have a place to grow, make friends, and feel like they truly belong.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Stephen Neal of Black Earth, to be followed by Lincoln Birkey, to be followed by Heidi Wegleitner. Stephen?
As a Latino hockey player who has played for over six years, I've visited Hartmire numerous times and have always appreciated how welcoming it is to a diverse range of people. I believe this has allowed me to make lifelong relationships with others and, um, and, um, yeah. And I, and I think this is very important. I've learned a lot of lessons at Hartmire, like how to work hard and how to persevere through difficult times. And because it needs repairs, I hope that you can support repairing Hartmire to its original state.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Lincoln Birkey of District 12, to be followed by Heidi Wegleitner, to be followed by Jennifer Williams. Lincoln?
Hi, I'm Lincoln Birkey. I play for the Patriots Rec Hockey Team. Vote yes to support Hartmire.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Heidi Wegleitner of District 12, to be followed by Jennifer Williams, to be followed by Margarita Northrup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just really briefly, this is our second year as a family participating in the Madison Patriots Hockey Program, although Lincoln has taken classes at Madison Ice Arena prior to that as well. And I was a basketball player, but I also had brothers that played hockey and come from a hockey family, and I can tell you, being in those arenas, I can just vouch for all of what you've heard already in terms of how heavily used they are and how many different types of folks, all ages, very diverse crowd and abilities are accessing these arenas. I mean, I was, I was astounded because that was not the experience that I remember from the Hudson Hockey Arena where my brothers grew up. So it was so cool to go and watch Lincoln and little kids learn to skate kind of right alongside, you know, people my age learning to skate over on Madison's west side. And we've had a really great experience with the, with the rec program, which is like kids from, you know, nine years old to 14 years old, all genders and, and skill levels that are just out there because they want to play hockey. They love the sport and they want to learn. And so I'm really grateful for that. I think that's a really unique thing about the Madison skating community, how accessible it is and how many different points of entry there are for all folks. So I'm just here on behalf of my family and as representative of District Two on the county board to encourage you to vote yes. It seems like a really good deal for Madison and our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jennifer Williams of District Three, to be followed by Margarita Northrup, to be followed by Elliot Cook and Arlo Embry. Jennifer?
I'm Jennifer Williams. I'm a resident on the east side of Madison. My memories of Hartmire start over 25 years ago when I was a manager of a local high school hockey team. I remember the school pride and large crowds gathering to cheer on the team. I gained skills at that very rink that I can honestly say were useful through various jobs through college and in my current career. Now, decades later, my kids are creating those memories and building life skills that they will carry with them for the rest of their lives. It's come full circle as many of the families are familiar faces from that high school team. We know what an impact that youth hockey can create for a child. Hartmire has given my kids confidence, an outlet for physical activity. It has taught them the importance of teamwork, the ability to be coachable, and has created a new sense of community for them outside of school with lifelong friendships that never would have happened if not for the rink.
Hartmire is a safe place, a happy place, and a necessary place for our kids and com- com- community. Community and, and willing.
No, please.
Oh, please consider voting yes to allow a motivated and willing organization help bring Hartmire back to life and maintain it for many more generations to come.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Margarita Northrup of District 17, to be followed by Elliot Cook and Arlo Embry, to be followed by Katie Spurgeon. Margarita?
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Margarita Northrup and I live in the Raindo Park neighborhood on the east side of Madison, in older Madison's district, only a short 10-minute drive to Hartmire Arena. Both my son Stefan and I are members of the Figure Skating Club of Madison, and he's one of the boys in the boy group you just heard, heard about in a minute. I'm here tonight in support of the resolution and speaking to, to you as a parent, a constituent, a proud east sider, and as a public health leader with extensive experience in public policy. As an east sider, I'd like to remind you that our side of town and neighborhoods have been identified in multiple city studies and assessments as severely lacking community gathering and recreational spaces, which is why, because of that stark need, particularly in winter months, we have decided to work on the Imagination Center, and that's been in the works for close to 10 years now, right? And we still don't know when the ground will be breaking and when we're going to have the facilities open up. And here we are, talking again about potentially closing down another recreational facility on the east side of Madison, northeast side of Madison. The value of Hartmire as a recreational space for our neighborhood is unquestionable. As a public health practitioner, I'd like to remind you that we're in the midst of a very serious mental health and social isolation crisis, and the situation is even worse when we look at some of our most vulnerable populations like youth and people with disabilities. Our youth are feeling squeezed out from public spaces and feeling unwelcome. Now, data is pretty clear on how alienated they feel, and here we are, talking about the possibility of closing down a recreational facility on the side of town that already lacks those spaces, a place that provides a sense, a sense of belonging to so many of our youth, you have heard from so many of them tonight, space for physical activity and public skating ear around, home to Learn to Skate programs and adaptive skating activities for athletes of all ability levels. I'd like you to think about the public health consequences of this policy question and the many presentations that we heard. In the past couple of months, we talked about all of the dollars that are to be made and passed on, but the public health considerations were completely missing from any of those conversations. Passing on opportunities to improve mental and physical health, social connectedness, and sense of belonging, particularly for our youth and our future, is not without a steep cost. And as a parent, I'd like you to know how important these arenas are to our family. So I'd like my son to close it down with a couple of points here, too.
Hello, my name is Stefan. I am 10 years old. I'm a figure skater. I like to, I like to skate to modern music, and this is my new alternative hip-hop skating costume. We all are like a big family and we know each other very well. As Asher and Soren said, we have made a boy group. We worked very hard in this rink, and I don't think you should tear down all the work we put into it. If you tear down the rink, we will-
If you could just wrap up, please.
If you tear down the rink, we will only have one rink, and we will have way many people on ice. And some people won't be able to skate because of the person limit on ice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Elliot Cook and Arlo Embry of Monona, to be followed by Katie Spurgeon, to be followed by David Gouda. Elliot and Arlo and friends.
Hello, my name is Elliot Cook and I play for the Madison Patriots Squirt Hockey Team. I have come to speak with you right now to help you make the right decision and save Hartmire Ice Arena. First, Hartmire is much more than just a hockey rink and is a place where you can learn to skate, make new friends, and feel connected to the Madison community. It also provides figure skating and open skating for all to enjoy. If you vote no on this proposal, you wouldn't just be turning down me and my Patriots team, but all the, all kids and parents from East Madison Cottage Grove and Monona communities who just want to rank to skate in. Hartmire is home to many travel hockey teams, recreational teams, a figure skating club, and the MG Silver Eagles Hockey Team. Shutting down Hartmire means that we would all have to find a new rink. That isn't fair because we've all made friends from different communities, and shutting down the rink means we might not ever see those friends again. During the winter, it keeps people of all ages physically active and moving when it's too cold to play, to play outside. That is an important part of keeping this community healthy. Finally, if you shut down the rink, kids that can't make the commute to other suburban rinks wouldn't be able to skate anymore, even if they wanted to. I know you will make the right decision and vote yes on selling Hartmire to the East Madison Ice Collective. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, my name is Arlo Embry and I'm in fourth grade. Hockey is my favorite sport. I've been playing since I could walk, and I can't imagine my life without the Hartmire Ice Arena. I have two brothers and all three of us play for the Patriots Youth Hockey Association. This year, I am a second-year Squirt, and today me and my teammates are wearing our white home jerseys in, in support of the Hartmire. As a hockey player, this is what the Hartmire Ice Arena means to me: fun, friendship, teamwork, responsibility, leadership, and sportsmanship. All of these skills are important for me to learn to be successful in life. The Hartmire Ice Arena also means a lot to our community. It gives kids something fun to do in the winter, gets people up and moving, and brings families together. Please vote yes to save the Hartmire Ice Arena.
Thank you. I think the folks, folks on the Monona City Council better watch out because those kids are coming for their jobs. Our next registrant is Katie Spurgeon of Grand Oak Trail, to be followed by David Gouda, to be followed by Jennifer Argalender. Katie?
Good evening. My name is Katie Spurgeon. I can remember the day that my hometown roller rink closed its doors. In an instant, my family's Sunday afternoons at Jan and Dean's Rollin' Wheels disappeared, and we were lost without our third space. So imagine my joy when my mom announced that I would try ice skating. She wanted to give me the opportunities her family could not afford, and our rink's low-cost public skate fit right into the budget, as did their Learn to Skate program, where I glided and fell more times than I could count. Armed with my helmet, snow pants, and unrelenting enthusiasm to try again, I made friends, met wonderful coaches, and only left the ice when the Zamboni insisted that time was up. Because my family joined a rink, our Sundays turned into Mondays and later Wednesday mornings before school. My dad learned to drive the Zamboni, and my mom learned to sew skating dresses, so going to the rink meant family time in the best way, including the car ride to Madison Ice Arena and Hartmire Ice Arena so I could skate with the big kids. Soon, I became a volunteer for the Learn to Skate program. The joy I felt helping kids learn how to skate left an impact on me, and before long, I was accepted into UW Madison School of Education. Throughout college, I kept going to MIA and Hartmire with the UW FSC, which booked ice at each rink to give a sufficient practice time to become competitive nationwide. As a collegiate athlete, I reassured young skaters that their skating dreams could grow with them, and they would always have a rink to come home to. Now, I have the joy of being both a coach and a teacher with the Madison Metropolitan School District. I've had my own classroom for a decade, and some of my former scholars have become my skating students, too. Teaching and coaching the Madison youth has given me a nuanced look into our community. I see how skating builds character, reinforces a growth mindset, and encourages kids to set goals and navigate physical challenges. Skating provides a venue for problem-solving skills to shine as athletes overcome obstacles, get creative, and have a fun workout all the while. This is exactly what our community needs, and Hartmire and MIA are where it happens. Skating is the first activity I recommend to my students' families during conferences, especially as summer school and MSCR classes quickly fill. I also encourage families of students with special needs to enroll in the adapted Learn to Skate program. While I live in District 15, I consider the rinks my home. We are privileged to have this third space because the rinks are where I see the Madison community truly thrive. Through MIA and Hartmire's open doors, I am assured that kids and families will have a place to learn, play, grow, and chase their dreams as they go on to become the Madison of the future.
About 20 seconds left.
As this council considers the value of the land that these rinks occupy, I challenge it to equally consider the value of the opportunities that the rinks bring to the Madison community and will bring to us for generations to come. Vote yes to this resolution.
Thank you. Our next registrant is David Gouda of Monona, to be followed by Jennifer Argalender, to be followed by Paul Soglan. David?
Thank you. Glad I didn't have to follow those kids. That would be tough. I'm here in support of the proposal. My family and I are super users of Hartmire and to lesser extent, MIA. I also have the honor of being the elected president of the Patriots Youth Hockey Association and the Dragons Hockey Association as well, many of them here today. With all due respect, I can't in three hours, let alone three minutes, tell you about how important Hartmire is to these skaters. I certainly agree with all the economic points, the testimonies, the programming, the opportunities that these rinks provide. So I'm going to talk a little bit more on legacy and community. Each of you, to your credit, and those who served Madison before you have built a legacy of diversity, inclusion, arts, and athletics. I strongly believe the offerings at both these rinks, MIA and Hartmire, support those values. I know they provide a sense of community to the nearly 350 Patriot youth hockey skaters, their family members, by the way, we're growing year over year by 18%, and the other countless community members you've heard from today. I won't reiterate again all those points, but rather remind you, a diverse offering of arts and athletics plays a critical role in creating a sense of belonging, community, and support for the youth who need it badly. Those are direct family members or family members in the areas you represent. Unfortunately, youth violence and tragedy in schools and communities on a national scale is too common. More recently, we had a horrific event here in Madison. While each tragedy is uniquely different, community and belonging is often a common thread in the conversations surrounding those events. Sometimes it's the lack thereof that might be noted as a contributing factor of such Sometimes, the community support is often referenced as an important aspect of healing and moving forward. The Hartmire and MIA rinks and programs for many provide that belonging and community they need. Don't make the demise of the rinks your legacy. Keep the legacy of diversity, inclusion, arts, and athletics ongoing. I implore you to support the Agenda Item 86169, the rink resolution for the betterment, health, and well-being of our kids and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jennifer Argalender of District 12, to be followed by Paul Soglan, to be followed by Maxwell Elmer. Jennifer? Do we have Jennifer?
Mayor, I don't see Jennifer online either.
Thank you. Then our next registrant is Paul Soglan of District Five, to be followed by Maxwell Elmer, to be followed by Gavin Neal. Paul?
For this, this opportunity to share with you some thoughts about Madison's ice facilities. As someone who's worked to keep Madison ice going over five decades through at least a minimum of three situations where we were in danger of losing them, I find that the moving testimony is an indication as to how popular and how important the ice rinks are. And for that reason, I suggest we do this right. And to think that at this time, rather than argue over who loves the children more or over who has done more to perpetuate hockey and the availability of ice, we start out by minimizing or at least addressing the myths that have come up about this, this challenge we're facing today. The first is something which was disproved when the city took on the challenges of the civic center and of overture, and that is that some people erroneously believe that if the city operates the facility, it will dry up private donations, when in fact, the research shows that the opposite is true. If there's a public commitment to a facility, private donations increase. We should recognize that in the Old Brick Gardens, the Madison Public Library. The next myth we have to deal with is that the president arrangements saved the city $5 million over the last 20-some years. That's just nonsense because that's based on a myth that the expenditures and the receipts for the facility would have been the same under city ownership. The next thing we have to understand is the myth that if this proposal fails, that we are giving up on ice sheets for Madison area residents. It's very clear that we ought to have examined, and this is where- It's very clear that we ought to have examined, and this is where we should start, by asking, what is the best solution for Hartmire, for Madison West, over the next 100 years? We never put in the effort, we never did the research as a city in the last few years to properly design and provide a facility for our skaters. Someone ought to consider the options, such as, what would happen if we sold off Hartmire, yes, sold it off, to the Madison Housing Authority as a site for housing, took in seven, eight million dollars?
About 30 seconds left.
And then were able to find a new location? We had somebody testimony from the county today. Why don't we relocate the ice facility on county grounds? Or perhaps the spare Oscar Meyer property? Or Hooper? Or old Webcrafters? The point is, we never started this discussion as it should have started.
That's your time. Thank you very much. Our next registrant is Maxwell Elmer of District 20, to be followed by Gavin Neal, to be followed by John Edwin Fonz. Maxwell?
Hello. I came here to say that I think we should keep both rinks. They are open to the community, even people who don't skate every day, just to go for a fun time. There's public skates and they make money off of them, kind of. And I began in the footsteps from my much older sister, who would skate as much as possible. And as soon as I was old enough to walk, I went right on the ice and became a figure skater and shortly after, a hockey player. I continue to do both sports and recently, ice dance. And I do all sports together in one, sometimes at one time, such as doing an axle in full hockey gear. And even my older sister, with anything that happens to her, she continues to skate and I hope to do the same. So I think it would be a great idea to keep the rinks. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gavin Neal of Black Earth, to be followed by John Edwin Fonz, to be followed by Shannon Bailey. Gavin?
The Madison Ice Rink means so much to me because it's where I've had the chance to try so many things, like learning to skate hockey, synchronized skating, and even competing in a big competition. As a Latino skater, I'm proud to be part of a rink where everyone is encouraged to try new things and have fun. I hope we can keep Hartmire open so more kids can experience the same thing, the same amazing opportunities I had.
Thank you. Our next registrant is John Edwin Fonz of District 11, to be followed by Shannon Bailey, to be followed by Lisa and Coral Marks. John? Do we have John online?
There should be a prompt to unmute, John.
John, you're unmuted on our end. You're going to need to unmute yourself on your side. You should have a prompt to do so.
That's done.
There you go. Go ahead.
I'd like to read the comment that I submitted earlier to you, Mayor, and to all Alders and to other individuals interested in this issue as follows. Tomorrow, I will send a notice of rent increase to the occupants of a residential property for which I am responsible in Madison. I will do so as a direct result of the property taxes increase voted into existence at the November 5, 2024 general election. I oppose that referendum based on repeated testimony given in public by reliable and experienced city officials who demonstrated without doubt a tax increase would be unnecessary given competent and disciplined management of city finances. The referendum passed, taxes have increased, and tomorrow valued tenants will learn they must pay more in Madison for the same place in which to live. Now the mayor and the council that sponsored those tax increases propose to forgive $1.6 million in defaulted loans plus interest and sell the properties to those responsible for $1. Behold, an analogy. Renters fail to pay payments on a house for not only months but for years. They have money in the bank, but they don't pay their agreed-upon obligation. I know it because I manage the property. They know it, but we keep the default a secret from the owner. And then I say to the owner, I've got a great idea. These people owe us a lot of money. Let's forgive the debt and give them the house. In this case, the owner is the public, since public money is involved. And that is exactly what Mayor, you, Satya Rhodes Conway, is proposing. And that is exactly why I oppose such a flagrant misuse of public funds and public trust in representing, as represented in the Agenda Item 86169. I have a few moments left. I'll use them. I want to congratulate whoever recruited all those children and those parents to come out on an eight-degree night and speak in person at this city council meeting. And I also want to congratulate whoever convinced them that if this present resolution, in its present form, is voted against, that somehow or other, these arenas will simply close or be torn down. No one in opposition to this resolution has suggested or believes that for a moment.
About 30 seconds left.
Fine. So the tactic of using these children and their parents as a form of children's crusade to emotionally finger paint over the raw financial issues at stake in this city is an egregious error. It's a mistake. You're making a lot of them, and I thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Shannon Bailey of Verona, to be followed by Lisa and Coral Marks, to be followed by Charles Forsmo. Do we have Shannon? If not, our next registrant is Lisa and Coral Marks of Cottage Grove, to be followed by, let's see, Charles Forsmo, to be followed by Carl Ohm. Do we have Lisa and Coral?
Hi, my name is Coral Marks and like, I love Hartmire so much and I love my coaches and I love skating there. And what I'm really trying to say is, I just hope that other kids like me have fun and I want Hartmire to always be open.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Charles Forsmo of Monona, to be followed by Carl Ohm, to be followed by Julia Matthews.
Good evening. Hartmire is a generational asset and my grandson was up here a little earlier and spoke, and he's been a skater for several years. I walked into Hartmire probably close to 40 years ago with our son and began playing knights, mites, hockey and still there, some 40 years later, with grandson, granddaughter that are both playing hockey there. So I hope the city finds a way to move ahead with keeping Hartmire open and keep all these kids happy that have shown up tonight to speak in favor. And it's been a great asset. It's been great for our family and I hope you guys can keep it open and keep it working for the families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Carl Ohm of District 12, to be followed by Julia Matthews, to be followed by Michelle from Cottage Grove. Carl?
Thank you. In the interest of time, I don't want to repeat all the testimonials you've heard before, all the benefits that Hartmire and Madison Ice Arena have provided the community over the last five-plus decades. What I want to remind you of is when we think about this wave of support that's going to exit the room after the public testimonial, we have a challenge before us to either accept this proposal that has been discussed or to reject it. And as you've heard from previous testimonials, they've suggested there's other alternatives. And the reality is, if we're suggesting the county pick this up, the county chose to shut down the Dane County Arena in the past. So we don't have options in other areas. We're coming to you as the body tonight with the best proposal that we've seen before us in years. Our daughters living four blocks from the arena have gone to three Title I schools. Many parents in our position have chosen to leave the city and go to other situations where they can improve better financial or educational opportunities. We've committed over the last 23 years to live at this residence and stay close to Hartmire and invest and passionately advocate for affordable, accessible recreation. We think about the other uses of that land in the future. We would really be challenged to try and build an arena on a property, knowing the current economic climate as well as that land value if we were looking at other positions in the community that are as close and accessible as what we have at both Hartmire and Madison Ice Arena. In the interest of time, I will cut it off here. Again, I appreciate all the attention that you've given to all the testimonials tonight. And once we leave, I encourage you to deliberate and make sure that you consider all the things that have been brought up, whether it's from the financial perspective or the public health benefits. You've heard a lot of positive attributes to these facilities, and I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Julia Matthews of District 12, to be followed by Michelle from Cottage Grove, to be followed by Alex Saludos. Julia?
Both mentions of the Hartmire Ice Arena in the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan talk of expanding recreation and wellness offerings by building on the existing legacy. MIA and Hartmire seem to have the most affordable programs of any area ice arena, equal or better public skate offerings than most, and several unique and important programs. I looked as far out as Stoughton in Oregon and the Madison Arenas were the only ones where I could find scholarship information prominently on their website. They offer at least two scholarships for every session of skating lessons. They are also the only arenas that have adaptive skate programs and their adaptive skate lessons are free. They're the only arenas who offer a non-traveling youth hockey team. East and La Follette use Hartmire for their high school teams. I'm not an ice arena expert, but have experience with swimming pools and the similar way they rent their time. I think there's less of a pool shortage than ice, but I definitely believe that the Madison Arenas are booked solid. And I definitely worry that if Hartmire had to close on short notice, it would be very hard, if not impossible, to find ice time anywhere else in the Madison area. Even with a long-term ramp to closure, without a replacement facility, some of these unique programs might not be able to continue. You already know there are three options for the city to pursue. The only option that spends no city money is to take the land back and shut down the Madison Arenas. The public outreach shows that would have a terrible impact on the community. It definitely wouldn't make access to skating better. The option for the city to take back operation of the Arenas would require so much of the city's limited resources and add more onto the operating and capital budgets. Based on every criticism I've heard of the current resolution, the city expenditure this would require seems to make this a financially irresponsible choice. With the addition of deed restrictions requiring a nonprofit sports and recreation use and the safeguards of the 3 million fundraising period and five years of operations required before any portion of the loan is forgiven, makes this the best available option overall and the best option for a path forward to the great future laid out in the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Michelle of Cottage Grove, to be followed by Alex Saludos, to be followed by Oliver Liu. Do we have Michelle?
Hi, yes. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I was born and raised in Madison, and I'm going to take everyone back a bit. My journey began on the ice in the 1970s. I started on Tenny Park after watching Dorothy Hamill win the Olympics and telling my mother that I wanted to skate, too. She took us to lessons at Tenny Park, but soon wanted something better and found Hartmire Ice Arena, where both my sister and I started in the Learn to Skate program there. From this point on, our journey began and we soon were part of the Figure Skating Club of Madison. My mother became very involved and became part of the board, where she took on roles as the treasurer and then the president for a period of time. We participated in local ice shows, competed, and spent many days and months and countless year-round hours perfecting our skills in order to move up in the levels. We skated at both Hartmire and Madison Ice Arena, which was medalists back then, year round. I found my passion on the ice and gained so much from my years as a figure skater. It made my decision to pass on my passion and move into coaching, a fairly easy one. I now coach individuals as well as synchronized skating teams. It's exhilarating to see little apprehensive five-year-olds come out onto the ice, hardly able to stand up and pick themselves up over and over again before they can finally stand and skate alone. To have children on the ice happy and excited to return again is a feeling like no other. It's exciting to watch that same child move up the ladder and start learning a jump or spin and feel so accomplished when they have landed their first big jump because they persevered. It's exciting to watch a synchronized skating team work so hard for a national berth and not only get there, but land on the podium, too. Yes, Madison is on the national scene, making a name for themselves. These Arenas serve a plethora of entities, as have been mentioned prior to me speaking. Please help us keep our Arenas open for years and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Alex Saludos of District 5, to be followed by Oliver Liu, to be followed by Emerson Wachowski, maybe? Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I speak to you tonight as a Madison resident concerned about good government. Growing up, my family were members of the Figure Skating Club, which brought great joy to my mom. I organized a hockey tournament at Hartmire with teams from four states, and my niece and nephew skated throughout their school years, with one reaching the state finals. A few weeks ago, my nephew's son, who's 18, laced on skates for the first time. I share the community's passion for these programs and want to ensure a bright future for them. However, I strongly urge the council to reject this proposal. The process behind it is deeply flawed. It raises serious concerns about transparency, fairness, and accountability. According to the minutes from Patriots Youth Hockey, Kevin Conroy, CEO of Exact Sciences and the mayor's largest campaign donor, lobbied on behalf of Madison Ice Inc. and EMIC. While there's nothing inherently wrong about this, it raises questions about whether the process has been unduly influenced by personal or political considerations. The public deserves confidence that decisions are made in the public interest, not driven by campaign contributions or behind-the-scenes lobbying. This afternoon, I emailed you a draft of an alternative resolution that addresses the complexities of this issue and the important information we should have to make the best decision. This resolution lays out a roadmap for a transparent and inclusive process. It ensures continuity for the programs, addresses the root causes of Madison Ice Inc.'s difficulties, conducts a thorough assessment of the arena's physical condition, explores financially viable options for renovating or replacing the Arenas based on accurate data and community needs. It engages stakeholders and the public. It aligns with the city's RJ initiative and establishes a financially sustainable path forward. It creates a task force of stakeholders to conduct a feasibility study and needs analysis, facility condition assessment, and operational review. Steps critical for ensuring decisions are based on facts and community input.
About 30 seconds left.
It will deliver a solution that best serves skaters and the public interest. This rushed proposal rewards past mismanagement without fixing the underlying problems. A transparent process like the one proposed in the resolution will lead to a more equitable and sustainable outcome. Please prioritize the public interest, equity, and accountability by rejecting this proposal.
That's your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next registrant is Oliver Liu of Middleton, Wisconsin, to be followed by Emerson. I'm sorry. -- I'm sorry.
Wojkowski.
Wojkowski, thank you. Oliver?
Hi, I'm Oliver Liu, and I'm part of the Figure Skating Club of Madison. I've been skating for three years, and I would really appreciate it if I could keep growing on a competitive path. MIA and Hartmire not only allow kids to grow physically and mentally, but also give them a stable training and skating time. It'd be really sad if MIA and Hartmire were to be taken down. And I've overcome so many challenges through my skating journey, and skating has brought me so many friends.
Thank you. All right. Next registrant is Emerson Wojowski of District 14, and then we'll circle back and see if we have Jennifer Argalander or Shannon Bailey. Emerson?
My name is Emerson Wojowski, and I'm a seventh-grade student at Senate Middle School, and I play for the Madison Patriots PVA Hockey Team. I wanted to speak to my city council members tonight to tell them just how much Hartmire Ice Arena means to me and the hundreds of kids that use the ice rink every week. Hartmire is where my dad taught me how to skate. It's where I fell in love with the game, and it's where I met my best friends. It's my happy place. It's my community. Some kids have the YMCA, a soccer field, a dance studio. We have Hartmire. Like those other places, Hartmire is a place where we can go to forget about homework, forget about what our parents want us to do when we get home. It's a place where we can go to be kids. Imagine taking away the YMCA or building over a soccer field. You would be taking away their community. I know I'm only 12, but without Hartmire, I wouldn't have built lifelong friends. I wouldn't have my community. In the future, I want to play hockey after high school, but I'm afraid if you don't vote in favor of this proposal tonight, you won't only dash my dreams, you will dash the dreams of hundreds of other kids in my community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have either Jennifer Argalander or Shannon Bailey? Doesn't look like we have either one of them. So I believe that that is all of the registrants wishing to speak. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone because it was a long list. Okay. So then...
There's somebody that I wanted to introduce to the council, but since I already told them, I didn't speak to them.
Did they register?
No, I don't think they did.
Okay. If you can maybe email their testimony to the council, that'd be great. Or you could pass it around and folks could take a look at it. Thank you. So then on item 50, are there questions for registrants from the council? Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much, and I appreciate that we're having this. I've spent a lot of time on this, have listened to so many. There's a lot of people that I'd like to call back and ask deeper questions, but I'm going to go ahead and give my counselors, the city council members, an opportunity. But I would ask people to stick around because I do have a list of people that I'd like to call back, and I'd like to give any speakers that were cut off more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I captured every name, but if there are some of the board members, including Emily, Damer, Lauren, Franzin, Elmer, and maybe Jessica or Rachel, I think we're all the board members are very active and talked about financial questions. I have like a basic question about whether -- what is the history of letting the users know of the financial issues and what were any fundraising efforts for the loan as opposed to just for improvements?
Any of those folks want to respond? Let's see, Laura, who's online?
Hi, this is Laura Franzin-Elmer.
Go ahead.
Hi. So we do continuously fundraise. As we've mentioned previously, we have invested over $5 million in the rinks in the previous years, and that money that we've invested in the rinks is -- a lot of it is through various fundraising efforts. So we do regularly fundraise to keep putting improvements into rank. In terms of information to our user groups, you know, part of that fundraising is disclosing that we have much-needed repairs that need to be done, and it is understood that we're a 501(c)(3). But as I mentioned before, what we have tried not to do is increase our costs because we want to continue to have the facilities available to the public at a rate that is accessible and affordable to as much of the community as possible. You know, part of what's transpired for us is that the, you know, the pandemic was kind of an unforeseen, never-before-experienced situation that, you know, we weren't exactly prepared, obviously, many businesses, to close our doors for such a prolonged period of time. And while we were closed, we still had to maintain operational expenses and continued to have to keep the facility in operational order because we weren't sure when the doors would be able to reorder, reopen. So that certainly had an impact on us. Did that answer your question?
Yes, I mean, I certainly am sympathetic with the -- how COVID affected everything in our world and how it affected you. It just occurred to me that, you know, there's, I don't know, I feel like, felt like hundreds of people showing up today, and we've heard from so many people that I just wondered if you had, you know, if we could have raised money, if you could have raised some money from them, if there was at least some symbolic amount of money, you could say, here's what we've raised just so people would help us, you know, clear this debt. Because, you know, besides the people who are emailing us in earnest support, we have heard at least from some people who are like, hey, I can't just waive off my debt and, you know, that kind of. So I just wanted to give you a chance to answer some of those concerns.
Yes, in terms of that, we had, at the time that we were looking to, you know, start talking about forgiveness of the debt, a lot of it is because when we assumed ownership of the ice arenas at the time that we did, my understanding, because obviously it wasn't on the board in 2004, but my understanding at the time was that the rinks were in tremendous disrepair. So from the beginning, we have been kind of fighting a bit of an upward battle to keep the rinks in good operating order, that we could keep the doors open. You know, like community pools, rinks are not a money-making proposition. Nobody gets into an ice arena and says, I'm going to turn this into a profitable business, right? Unless you have, you know, a pro hockey team or something like that. Community rinks cost money to run. It costs us $1.4 million in operating expenses to run these rinks every year. I understand that, you know, some people feel that this money shouldn't be forgiven, but I also feel that many rinks in most communities are subsidized by the cities. We offer ice for community types of programs. Our high schools utilize these facilities for high school hockey, and it's important to the community to keep them going. We are looking to try to maximize the improvements to the rink by utilizing donated money towards improving the rinks, keeping the ice operational, and putting that money and paying off the debt, just as I mentioned, adds an additional hardship. I know some of the opposition have spoken about, you know, that instead what we should be doing is building bigger, better facilities. I'm unsure how we think that would cost less than the amount of money that we're talking about now. You know, the facility that Janesville's talking about putting up is going to cost upwards of $50 million, so I'm not sure if the community is in more support of doing something like that.
And one last follow-up, Laura. I think at Finest, maybe it was Tom Conti, or maybe you or some of the other speakers, talked about some of the work that you did in the last year talking with staff. If you could just talk a little bit about the efforts you made to, as one of the previous speakers said, be transparent about your situation so the council understands.
I'm sorry, ask me again. I didn't understand what you said.
From what I understand from staff, you've worked with them for over a year, and I just wonder if you could talk a little about that, that process that you went through.
Are you talking about working with the MIA staff?
With city staff.
City staff, yeah. I have to defer that one to Rachel or Jessica, as that was the EMIC pool.
Okay.
Alder, we have somebody who's stepped up to answer the question. Can you introduce yourself, please?
So my name's Tom Conti, and I'm a member of the EMIC. And so we've done the fundraising. We did an initial outreach over the last year and a half to raise funds from some key -- from some of the key stakeholders. And so that was, I think the one thing that Laura didn't mention is that by splitting the ownership allows for a more targeted fundraising effort, and I think that's been very helpful for us to focus on the east side of Madison for the Hartmire Ice Arena, to be able to target folks in that area and look to gain their support for the funds. And so that was, that's what we've done in the past year and a half, and I think that's allowed us to feel confident about the ability we have to raise the funds to improve the Hartmire Ice Arena.
And Tom, can you, or maybe there's somebody else in the room, speak to the Alder's question about over the last year plus that you've been working with city staff and what that process has looked like?
Yeah, sure. So we reached out to the city. We had our first meeting in the summer of 2023, and then it really, it really ramped up in early 2024. And the whole goal here was to find an appropriate structure for the EMIC to be successful with the Hartmire Ice Arena. And so what was the right structure where we could raise the private funds needed for the successful updates? The city did do a site visit on the Hartmire -- they did a site visit through the Hartmire Ice Arena. They evaluated what was needed. We had bids for those specific items to show what it's going to take, and it came to $2.5 million. We have a 20 percent in there in order to pad for things that, you know, that are going to come up, but that's where we came to the $3 million number, and it essentially will replace a lot of the core infrastructure there to make sure that the ice arena will be available for the next 15 to 20 years.
Thank you, Mayor. That's good for me for now.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you. Alder Harrington-McKinney, questions?
Mayor, could I just cut in? This is Alder Armani-Latimer-Burris. I don't want to have to bring Tom and Laura back up, so could I just, if I raise my hand, could you just know that I want to ask a follow-up question? Or what will be most simple, please?
Alder Harrington-McKinney, will you defer to Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will.
Thank you, Alder. Go ahead, Alder Latimer-Burris.
Thanks. I just wanted to ask Tom a follow-up question and also Laura, please.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm looking at your executive summary, Tom, and I appreciate all of this. This has been a long process. I've learned a lot, spent literally 80 physical hours on it, and I know that everybody wants the best solution, including all of us Alders, certainly myself. Your literature says in 2022, EMIC began and MIA began the process of working with the city of Madison on a way to restructure the debt and split the rinks under the dedicated ownership to allow for both rinks to prioritize facility needs, et cetera. So were you part of that 2022 discussion that happened before 2023? And again, I'm reading right from your literature for East Madison Ice Collective, and then secondly, for the MIA Board of Directors.
Yes, so I was a part of the founding team for the EMIC, and so we talked to MIA in 2022 and then approached the city in 2023 as a part of that process.
Okay, so this is incorrect because it says in 2022, EMIC began working with the city of Madison. That's incorrect in your literature?
I mean, I believe we probably did have some outreach. The first official meeting we had was in the summer of 2023 in the building across the street.
Okay. And when were the unofficial meetings happening?
I believe that would be by email, but I, so...
Okay. And then I'm also curious, who at the city when you started, so I'm splitting those two years, in 2023, who at the city were you working with when you were talking, specifically who?
We were working with Matt Wojowski.
Okay. And I know that I went, the first time I became aware of what you guys were doing, I think I met you guys in October of '23, correct?
Yeah, that's right. We walked through Hartmire together.
Okay. And then in 2022, do you happen to know who you were emailing with or, you know, who people were talking with? I'm trying to get at, Tom, I know you want what's best, and I want to just get through, like, how this all came down. Because when I talked to Matt, you know, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, he was directed to work with you guys. So I'm trying to see what's going on behind the scenes, and then I'm also trying to see what can we do in the future so that it can work out for everybody. So, you know?
So the year here, I'm not sure is the essential point here. We did approach the Madison Ice Incorporated to look for a plan to separate the ownership and went through a process with them to be selected as the group that should take over the Hartmire Ice Arena. And that was when we approached the city to talk about a potential path forward to set these rinks up for success.
Okay. And then that brings me to a next question that I'm super glad that you brought it up. On your literature, and I'm trying to find the exact page here, I think I got it, it says that you guys, that everybody's been vetted, that you guys have spent a lot of time vetting. What was that process like? Were, because I know some of the board members, like Rachel and its public record Jessica, are on both boards. I don't know when people started getting in and getting off, and I talked to Laura. I know that she is just on most recently. But it said that you guys have been fully vetted. Did you guys have an outside firm vet you guys, or you guys just really doing this as friends or parents of Hartmire or Madison Ice Inc.? When I mean, who vetted?
I'm sorry, Alder, can you hold on a minute? We have a point of order. Alder, whatever.
What is the relevance of this to the situation? She's asking about the board composition? It's a public entity. I don't understand the relevance.
Okay.
Alder, would you speak to the relevance, please?
Yeah, so the relevance of it is that when you start going in, it's like, okay, so normally, as I understand, it's a process as a city, so, you know, urbanly, central Hispano, I mean, we could just go down the list. Normally, we go through a vetting process, and we do a request for proposals, and we look at the board structure. We do consider that.
Alder, I understand what you're getting at, but I don't think that the question is relevant because this was not a vetting by the city.
Oh, it's not vetted by the city.
It was a private agreement between the two nonprofit organizations.
Perfect. That's what I was trying to get at. It's not a vetting by the city. Perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you, Tom. I appreciate it.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington-McKinney, questions?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I had questions for Laura as well. Or...
All right. Go ahead, Alder, but I'll just remind all of us that we do have public comment on two more items tonight.
Hmm.
You have questions for Laura, Alder?
Yes, I do. So Laura, thank you so much, and thank you for your transparency and just, you know, answering. I know that we did the, I can't even remember which one. We did economic development, I think, together. We were sitting close to each other, and I do appreciate that when you just say, I don't know, you know, just get on here. One of the comments that you made was, and I'm asking you this really gently, is something about raising the prices... about raising the prices and raising the fees. I'm wondering, what is, do you know what the plan of action is for these entities to make this successful? And how would we do it without raising fees when the fees, and I don't even know if the fees are sufficient or not, because I haven't looked at any, there hasn't been any economic development studies on it. So I'm curious, how, how do we ensure that you guys are going to make it? And not have the same pattern happen again? What's your plan of action as a board?
Sure. Sure, thanks for the question. We, we do do market value research regularly. We try to keep in, kind of in the same ballpark as other ranks. The executive director of our rank talks to executive directors of other ranks. We keep, we have raised prices. So it's not that we don't ever raise prices. We do have to keep, again, kind of in that market norm. My statement was that we don't want to raise above that market norm, right? It's not that we never raise prices with inflation. In fact, we fairly recently raised our hourly ice rates. It's just that for some of the programs that are more community based, like the public skates and the Learn to Skate programs, we really try to keep those from increasing as much as we possibly can. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't ever. We, like anyone else, budget regularly. We compare our operating expenses with our revenue, and we make sure that, you know, we keep them in alignment.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. And then you, you said something about that you were unsure if the community supports expansion. Do you know on either of these proposals or the one resolution which covers both proposal, have you guys ever tested the water to see if you could get public support for expansion? I had the privilege of walking through Sun Prairie, and I think you'll agree with me, Hartmire's is like, it's beyond second class to other facilities, which is important because we're hitting kids that are most vulnerable. And what is your experience? So I'm a two-part question, is have you looked at, you know, could you get community support for something different, something better? And then how does, how does, in your estimation, Hartmire compare to, like, all these other ranks? As far as what it looks like and feels like in, you know, revenue and all that. I was shocked when I went to Sun Prairie, I was like, wow, this is awesome.
Yeah, I'll say a couple of things about that. The first thing is that, of course, we're always asking for the opportunity to do.
The first question is relevant.
Okay, well, I will, I will say that we are always seeking to put improvements into the rank to include, we've had plans drawn up and, and in the past, I, because I, I know because I've seen pictures up at the rank about proposals for a second sheet of ice, since we end up turning people away because we have more need for ice than we have ice available. So it's just that, you know, as you can see from Verona, just putting in a second sheet of ice on land they already own, they spent about $10 million to do that. It's a very expensive proposition to put in a second sheet of ice. We would love to do some of those renewals. But I would also say that in many ways, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. Like, some of us prefer to own a new house that has new plumbing and new electrical and nothing to worry about, while others of us enjoy the charm of an older home. These ice arenas may to you not look beautiful, but to me, they are beautiful. I love every crack in the paint. I love everything about them. And like restoring an old car, we're putting our money into the engine, not into the paint job. So I know when you walk in, it doesn't necessarily look as beautiful as you might want it to be. But I will also say that Sun Prairie may look beautiful, but our rank is far more successful than they are.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, I don't, I, it sounded like I was insulting it. I'm not.
A question, Alder.
What I was concerned about, I'll turn it into a question. What I was concerned about is like, you know, really, like, I saw some of the serious problems going on, and, you know, you're talking to the historical person, Landmarks Commission, I'm all about history. This is where, you know, Eric Skated went to the Olympics, and we can go on, I can go down the whole history. So I'm just wondering, is, is, if you guys have looked at doing, doing, you know, what do you, you know, if, if we could do something different, is that a possibility or not?
Alder, I think that the question's been asked and answered.
All right, well, that's perfect. And thank you, Laura. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions?
Yes, and one of my questions for Laura, Laura, but I'm not going, I'm going to skip that because there was a very intensive Q and A. But I'd like to, is Paul Soglin still connected?
Mayor, I don't see Paul Soglin.
No, I don't believe he's online anymore, Alder.
Is Alex Saluto still connected?
Alex is still here.
Okay, Alex, you had started, that you had sent some information to Alders. And in your presentation, did you complete your presentation? Could you go ahead and give us some extra minutes on it, and so that you can go to completion if you can summarize quickly?
I think I had one more sentence left, and I just wanted to say that I'd vote no on this and consider an alternative resolution that ensures the operation, continued operation of the arenas and evaluates other alternatives that are in the best interest of the skaters and the public interest.
So with that statement, you're saying, consider an alternate. And so what are the three things that, that you would recommend that would be included in an alternate, since you've evaluated this?
First, I'd say the spitballing that's going on here about what can and can't happen is just that, that there are subject matter experts that do feasibility studies and needs analysis for ice arenas. Janesville's done one, Racine's done one, Eau Claire's done one. So that would be one of the items. A couple of the other items in that resolution are a facilities assessment report. And to my knowledge, that has never been done. It's comparable to a home inspection, except for a commercial building. And it would have a table that includes immediate repairs, line items and costs, and then a long-term, a schedule of long-term maintenance, and the cost for those. And then that can be used to tie out to creating a sinking fund or a reserve fund for capital expenses, which also, there's no evidence that that was ever done. I'd also tie out a capital campaign feasibility study to assess the community's ability to support a capital campaign for both repairs and renovations at the current facilities versus new facilities. Because, one, the current goal was set based on the need, not the capacity, which is a cardinal sin in capital campaigns. And donors often will support a new project more than, well, we've got, got to fix these facilities, which are at the end of their useful life. And there are a couple of other things in that resolution, but those are the most important things. The other things, if I recall, were audited financial statements, going back a few years, and then also going forward in there. So is that helpful?
Yes. Yes, thank you. That was very helpful. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders with questions. Alder Latimer Burris?
Yeah, I would like to check to see if we can bring back Soglin, please.
Former Mayor Soglin is no longer on the Zoom.
Could you check?
Mayor, Paul is back on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. I just wanted to give the former mayor a moment to finish up any statements that he wants and see if anybody else has any questions for the mayor, please.
An additional minute? Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. Well, let me, let me look forward rather than backward. In looking at a major facility, whether it's a public works, a civic cultural endeavor or an athletic one, I think there's two questions that need to be asked at the very beginning. The first question is, if there's already a site in question, is this the best site for that facility? And then the second question is, where is the best site for that facility? And we were stuck with both Hartmire and Madison West. We had inherited those sites. We saw both of them go through private, or I should, yes, private, because they weren't public, private hands as much as 50 years ago, and again in the last 20 years. I'm not convinced. In fact, I'm confident that the city can properly and effectively manage ice arenas. It's done it in the past. And just as we learned with Manona Terrace, there are considerable advantages to public operation rather than private operation. That said, I'm just dismayed that we're looking at trying to put lipstick on a pig. Two dated facilities, two facilities that are going to cost more to rehabilitate than they're worth. And I don't think anyone ever suggested that if this resolution failed, that the city should step away from supporting equity on ice. And now is obviously the time. And I can make some other arguments. For example, how are these facilities going to be operated if they're remodeled while we're simultaneously trying to use them? And I think that when you look at the value of the property, you look at the equity question. I want to dwell on the equity question in terms of cost and burden. We had all these kids and their parents speaking earlier about how wonderful the facilities are and how important they are.
Excuse me, you're at additional two minutes now. If you could wrap up the rest of your comments.
So they spoke about how important the facilities were to them. Nobody addressed who should carry the burden of that cost. Should it be the 75-year-old woman I overheard in the checkout line at the supermarket recently who said, "I'm two property tax hikes away from losing my house." And I'm convinced from the research that's been done in other areas and what we've seen with Olbrich and the public library and other city facilities, even the golf courses, that a proper public partner, public-private partnership could easily raise the money, not only for new and proper facilities, but for the continued ongoing cost.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have a question for former Mayor Soglin?
Okay, Mayor Soglin, one question. Summarize public-private partnership. Can you summarize that for us in, in a short amount of time? What would that look like?
I'll just say, look at Olbrich. Olbrich is owned and operated by the city. It was designed by the city, and there was an enormous amount of money raised to not only pay for the construction of Olbrich, but also to take care of some of the operating costs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am complete. I think that the former mayor is also complete with his statements.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison, is it questions for the former mayor? Alder Duncan? Alder Duncan, go ahead.
I wanted to ask former Mayor Soglin, when he was having his conversation about making sure that we do it right this time, I was wondering if he could provide just a short summary of what was done in 2017 when the Second Amendment to the land contract restructured the debt? If there was a big analysis completed at that point in time, determining what was best for the city at that point?
The recipients of the land contract came to the city in 2017 and made what I thought at the time was a convincing, but obviously incorrect case, that if they were given an extension and a restructuring, that they could continue to meet the obligations under a new agreement. And let me just say, the whole history of Hartmire and Medalist, which was the original name of Madison West, is just peppered with continued private failures and the city coming in, stepping up and bailing out who was ever in charge at the time. Goes back to Greg Campbell and his operation at Hartmire. It goes back to the original folks who set up Medalist. And it continued in 2004, and it continued in 2017. I don't know why, what do they say, something about what it is when you keep repeating the same failure over and over again.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris, questions for former Mayor Soglin?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mayor, I just wanted to ask you, if we extinguish this land contract, which is a resolution caused to do, what's your experience of how we will enforce what we no longer own? And then my other question is, if we did take it back and we committed not to closing the Hartmire Ice Arena and not closing any arenas, could Parks operate that? Have we ever experienced that before?
Parks successfully operated both facilities for 25 years. There's no question in my mind, and this never would have happened if we hadn't had in 2004 for five, six, seven years a private superintendent who frankly didn't want the headache of managing ice and convinced the then-mayor to enter into this agreement as a way of getting the city out of it. It's not easy managing ice. To get to the heart of your question, I am confident that the city has the resources, the talent and the skill of operating the facility. I want to make the point that goes back to Manona Terrace. There's only so much you can do with volunteers. You have to have professional people operating a public facility. You can't do it on a part-time basis.
And then could you just speak to if we extinguish the land contract, which gives us the right to the land, how do we enforce that?
Oh, it's very simple.
Yeah.
It's very simple. You do what any vendor does on a land contract when the buyer fails to make payments. You go to court, or they can voluntarily surrender their quitclaim deed. Right now, nobody can provide a warranty deed on this. The city, because it's vended under the land contract, and Madison Ice, because they don't have full title for their failure to make the payments to the city. So.
So what happens when we transfer that full title over to Madison Ice Inc. and each has their own full title?
Alder, can I suggest that your questions are more appropriate for city staff?
He has expertise in it. I'm just asking. So if you could answer that, I won't ask any more questions that can't be mitigated by.
Normally, normally, and this has been true as long as land contracts, which are a curious device here in Wisconsin. Normally, what happens is when the person who makes the purchase under the land contract fails to make payments, the vendor goes to court, demands payment, and as we know, the land contract where there's a failure to. demands payment, and as we know, the land contract where there's a failure to cure, they have an opportunity as the buyer to come up with the full payment, and failing that, they must surrender the pay, the, the property to the vendor, which would be the city. This is something that should have been done three years ago, but there's no reason it can't be done today. If they want a cure and come up with the full payment owed to the city, they're on their own. It's their property, and clearly Madison, the city of Madison as a government, will not be in the ice business.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Rose Conway. I just have a question for anybody from the ice rinks or one of the adults or one of the young people. I just want to clarify my facts. So for the adaptive sports, the arenas are one of the only places that young people who need adaptive sports, where they can take, you know, use the rinks and have some sort of programming that keeps them in mind. Is that correct?
Any of the folks here can speak to the adaptive sports?
I think in our last meeting, someone mentioned it, but I fully write it down.
You, you do have to come to the microphone so the folks on Zoom can hear you.
I would, I would defer to Emily Deemer, who is probably on the line. She actually works with the program and knows a lot more. But I can say it is the only adaptive program in the state, and from what I've been told, even surrounding states.
Emily, Emily is unmuted, I think. Go ahead, Emily. Oh, you were just unmuted. There you go.
Hello. Yeah. I work with MII. I don't want to speak to other rinks, but from, but members and participants of our program have us, we are the only adaptive program in the greater city of Madison. We are the only program that offers it for free. And we are a, I think, the only sled hockey rink with as far accessibility to the ice and the adaptive benches and boards that we have. I'm sure other rinks have programs, but I do know that ours is a large one and important, and we budget to provide for it to, for free.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Another Alder's in the queue with questions. So we'll move on then to the rest of our public comment. The next item we have public comment on is item 33, approving plans, specifications, and authorizing at the advertising and receiving of bids for the Imagination Center at Rindell Park. We have one registrant wishing to speak on this item. Chuck Litwiler of District 17. Do we have Chuck?
For some of you who may not be familiar with...
Chuck, please come to the microphone so the folks on Zoom can hear you.
Some of you who may not be familiar with what will be removed when the Imagination Center takes over. This, this is a picture. You can pass it around. So you have, we are not building on vacant land, and that is the key. I know that this is going to be approved. My hope is it is not approved tonight. At the head of the agenda, the appointed agenda, you have some things about what decision-makers should consider when they are making, making plans. Who does not have a voice at the table? Districts of, residents of District 12 and 17 were never asked where the center should be sited in the park. In the park, but never where. Unintended consequences. Thank you. The, the, if, if you don't, the unintended consequence is that they might pull this plan again in some other park. It's been entirely done without, without bringing in the District 17 and 12 residents. The questions need to be asked of the Superintendent of Parks, who I assume is not here tonight. And if it is not, if it, if he does not, apparently not here, I think this, this vote should be postponed until these questions are answered by him in person. And the questions are, when was the decision made to cite the center where trees in the park shelter would have to be removed? We, when did you learn the relevant Wisconsin statute and procedures that control citing a building in a city park? It's a unique situation. Parks, the Parks Commission has sole authority... To begin with, you only come in at the last minute. I'm not aware of them coming to you for a vote on this matter, except that at the end of the proceedings, they, there is a requirement that you vote on the site. Well, everything's been set up and done now, except the, except the bidding, and at this point, you come in. All you can do then is approve it normally.
That's your time.
It's fine.
Thank you.
I will be back if, no, let me, let me throw in one more thing.
Sir, that's your time. If somebody wants to ask a question, they, you can follow up.
Anybody has any questions, ask me.
Thank you. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor Rose Conway.
You got to speak up because I'm deaf.
Chuck, I would like to ask more time for Chuck, for another, one more minute to finish up.
We'll give you another minute.
Let's see, do I have any other questions of him? Well, I, I want, I want this vote put off, and I want answers from the partner, from the Parks Director, and I have three other people for whom I am speaking, all residents of District 17. I expect this to pass. If you vote on it tonight, I encourage one person here to request a roll call vote. I have more to say, but if you've got any questions, ask me.
Thank you. Alder Madison, questions?
Yes, Mayor Rose Conway. I just want to say for the Speaker Chuck, if you like, I will absolutely schedule a time with engineering, again, Antonia, or from the library.
I, I can't hear well. You got to scream.
I will scream with you, Chuck, but I will absolutely schedule a time to go through some of your questions with the engineering director, the director.
I'm, I'm not interested in, I want him to appear before this body, not you alone.
Okay. I'd just like to also mention a couple other District 17 residents did register in support. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Chuck. I have no other Alders in the queue for questions. So our next item with registrants wishing to speak is item 47. It is accepting the report of a hearing from the Ethics Board. Our first registrant wishing to speak is Amelia Royco-Maurer of Arena, Wisconsin, to be followed by Damon Etalia Terrell, to be followed by Shadira Kilfoi Flores. Do we have Amelia?
Mayor, Amelia was just here and now disappeared.
She may have accidentally logged off. Will come back. Do we have then Damon Etalia Terrell of District 13? Go ahead.
Thank you all for having me. I'll be brief. I'm here as an attorney helping Shadira over here with her ethics complaint situation. I respect the work of the committee. They were diligent. They, they did make available some of their materials to you all, but I do believe that there's some legal nuance that got lost and led to a poor decision in this scenario. First of all, I'd like to mention that this is a fairly extraordinary rebuke for a fairly mundane activity. If you look at the video, it, it's clear that nothing was asked for and nothing was received. So I think there's a lot of work being done to impute to my client some states of mind, including asking for things, including pushing for things, coercing things out of people that just didn't happen, unless you import that from your own sense of who she is or is going to be, which considering her longstanding community history is absurd. I think the other thing that happened is the events of the night where her daughter was being dealt with by police in a manner that would make most people quite upset. She handled herself fairly well and said that there would be accountability for the things that she saw. That is not violation of ethics code. That is something that most people should do when they see something that violates their sense of ethics. There was later a conversation with a different actor entirely who asked her directly, what would she like to happen in the situation involving her daughter? She answered, and then those conversations were made public at a separate time. There was no reference to her position in the second conversation, right? And so in order to be found in violation of this particular section of the ethics code, you have to use your position or attempt to use your position to try to get something of value. To be clear, the thing of value she was accused of looking for is accountability for fairly racist, openly racist police activity. That, that's not a special thing. That's not a thing of value that one should have to threaten anything about. She may have chosen her words differently today than in the past, but I mean, I, I don't think Madison is, has such a glut of people trying to do free work for it that it makes sense to, to forbid her from doing so. So I think there's two, two areas you could intervene here.
About 30 seconds left.
Thank you. One is to find that there just isn't enough evidence to find a violation of ethics in this scenario. I think you can take a fresh look at the evidence and then see, see what you think. And the other place to intervene is in the proposed sanctions, which currently would prevent her from continuing to serve the city, even though she doesn't serve in the same capacity moving forward. She lives here and cares about this place and is one of the few people you can count on to continue to be involved in making this place better for free. So I'll leave it at that.
That's your time, thank you. Our next registrant is Shadira Kilfoi Flores of District 6, to be followed by Sharon Kilfoi, and then we'll circle back for Amelia. Shadira?
I'm going to go to the podium.
Good call.
Good evening. I'm so connected to this community that I painted a mural in the Madison Ice Arena when I was 17 that was there for decades. I'm here to oppose item 47 on your agenda. I urge you to reject the Ethics Committee recommendation that I not be appointed to a City Board, Commission, or Committee for the period of 12 months, and that if I am appointed to a city body, that I undergo training regarding the ethics code during the first month of service. That part I'm not opposed to. In fact, I'm very in favor of anyone who is serving on any board in any capacity to receive full ethics training. And, but I reject the implication that I'm unfit to serve on any city committees. In fact, I've served on Madison's district city committee for Tepatitla in Mexico now for eight years, and I've done multiple murals and mosaics there and have served as a diplomat for Madison. I have no intention of stepping down from that position. In fact, I'm scheduled to go there in April. So there are three reasons why you should reject this recommendation. One was the failure to train members of Boards, Commissions, Committees, and the ethics code belongs to you and the mayor, not to the individual members of the public who are serving the city with good intentions. As a founding member of Madison's groundbreaking Police Civilian Oversight Board, we face many challenges, among them opposition from the police, as well as lack of training and support to carry out our duties under the new ordinance. At the time, the members of the Common Council who wanted to support our development and implementation and the difficult task of hiring the independent monitor were told by the city attorney that they couldn't participate in shaping our orientation and training because that would compromise our independence. So I understand that as well. The training that we did receive from the city did not address the complex and unprecedented position that PCOB members are put in with regards to our primary responsibilities to the community for police oversight and responsibilities as a member of a quasi-independent arm of the city government. If we lack training, it is not our fault.
About 30 seconds left.
And I should not be singled out for needing to receive this. This is extremely hurtful and damaging to my reputation and the community. Two, the Chair of the Ethics Board, I'll send this to you because it's quite disturbing, you know, the, the Chair of the Ethics Board really ought to have recused himself. Three, if any other people who have been found guilty of violating the ethics code have been singled out for publicly shaming and ban on future public service.
That's your time. Just finish your sentence.
Most of the other Ethics Committee decisions are made without any recommendation to the Council. Even the complainant didn't ask for this level of public shame and punishment. Why then has the Ethics Committee singled me out? And why was this pursued even after my term had expired in September?
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sharon Kilfoi of District 6, to be followed by Amelia Royco-Maurer. Do we have Sharon? Sharon, you're unmuted on our side, but we can't hear you. I don't know if you have a mute button on a microphone or... Sharon, if you can work on figuring that out, we're going to go to Amelia and come back to you. So next then is Amelia Royco-Maurer of Arena, Wisconsin.
Hi, everyone. I'm asking you to vote against sanctioning Shadira Kilfoi Flores, just as the Council did not sanction Chief Koval in 2017 when he was found by the PFC to have violated MPD and city standards of conduct in three separate incidents. In fact, the Council paid his $20,000 attorney fees as a gift. You didn't sanction Council President Sherri Carter in 2021, who was found by the state to have violated the 50-piece rule, just as the Council did not sanction Chief Barnes in 2023 for publicly endorsing Council members for that spring election, just as the Council did not sanction Ethics Chair Joseph Baring in 2023 for publicly encouraging and enabling Chief Barnes in doing so, and then not taking responsibility for his own behavior. Despite being city-appointed leaders and having received full training by the city attorney, all claim to not know the rules, not even the Ethics Chair. If you do believe Shadira violated any ethics code, well, Shadira received no training on the ethics code, and that's on the city, not her. And in all fairness, I believe the Council should pay her attorney fees too, just like they paid Chief Koval's. But the fact is, Shady did not violate the ethics code. The order of events that occurred the night of her daughter, her daughter's arrest do matter. They demonstrate that by the time Shady mentioned her role as PCOB Chair, her daughter was willingly getting into the squad car. Shadira was not obstructing nor asking them for anything. She did not ask for special treatment. She never said she'd do anything outside of what a resident, any resident could do. She never said they would be found guilty of anything due to her role. What she did expect the officers to do is follow their core values within their code of conduct by treating everyone, including her children, with dignity, respect, and fairness. After mentioning her role, she never asked, even asked for that. What she did do was let them know she was informed and would, as any resident could, contact the chief and would, as any resident could, have their behavior investigated. After witnessing the impact of serious disregard by the perpetrator for her daughter's well-being, and then the officer's unfair treatment, their antagonistic responses to Shady's panic and worry, their misappropriating of an indigenous term before a Mexican indigenous woman who was wearing large earrings of Native design, as she saw her brutalized daughter, who is black, like Sandra Bland, being detained and getting into an MPD squad car, Shadira mentioned her role to let them know she is informed.
You have about 30 seconds left.
After mentioning her role, she did not ask them to stop. She didn't ask them for anything. There was no quid pro quo. She did not state that they would be found guilty. She was walking beside them with a plush blanket in a state of terror. There was no PCOB process in place at that time, and she has no more power within There was no PCOB process in place at that time, and she has no more power with Internal Affairs than the average resident. In fact, due to the hatred against the incessant undermining of the PCOB, some might find that she has less power. There was no quid pro quo.
That's your time.
Please vote against number 47. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's try again for Sharon. You should be able to unmute yourself, Sharon. You should have a prompt, Sharon, to unmute yourself. Might be hidden under a window. It doesn't look like she's on the phone, but yeah, if you're on the phone, then you can use star six to unmute. We can't unmute you fully. You have permission to unmute yourself at this point. All right, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask you to email all Alders with your comment because we're going to have to move on. Are there questions?
Mayor, I have the email.
Is there objection?
Mayor, it looks like a phone just joined, perhaps.
Yeah, so if you all want to check your email, that is in your inboxes, and if you would, please check that and read it. All right, are there questions for any of the registrants on item 47? Alder Latimer-Burris, a question?
Yes, I would like to give both speakers that were cut off more time, and then I do have a question for Shadira, please.
Would you like another minute?
Thank you. I will try to be brief. I do think it's important to talk about what I do as an attorney. What part of what we're told to look for in a case is what are called elements, right? So you want to look into the statute and see what are the elements that need to be proven and whose job is it to prove them? I don't think the elements were met here. And the last thing I really wanted to make sure got brought up is that I find it somewhat ironic. I think this only got this far because of the official positions of the people who complained. The complainant admitted that they made this complaint on behalf of somebody that doesn't live in Madison, and the reason they did that is because they had access to this information from their job as a union rep for the police.
About 15 seconds.
And I do think to some degree we're straining here to validate the perspective that these people would in any way be influenced by any of us. I have pleaded with dozens of officers for the return of dozens of loved ones, and I can guarantee you it doesn't happen. So the idea that somebody who professionally works on the issue would be under any illusion that she could say those things and get her daughter back is laughable, and I don't think it should really be taken seriously. I am available for questions.
Thank you.
What I wanted to finish saying was that I feel as though I have certainly been singled out in terms of the sanction, whereas there have been people who have been found guilty who have not received any sanction at all. And to be honest, it's truly a slap in my face considering the thousands of hours that I've given to Madison. Frequently, when it came to the PCOB, I spent 40 hours a week, or excuse me, a month, 10 hours a week, talking to other PCOB members. And so to be gone after by the police union the way that I have, I understand it, but again, I ask that you not authorize any sanctions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yeah, so I want to just ask Shady a question, if you're okay with I call you that. I don't know you that well. I did meet with you the day after the last council, and mom to mom, you told me about the situation, and I was wondering, were you acting kind of like, just like a mom does? Like, you talked to me about the long history that your daughter had with the police and how she was, you know, afraid and whatnot, or were you trying to really do influence? I'm totally shocked by this. I don't know you. I listened to the story.
Alder, a question?
Yeah, so I asked you that question. Thank you for the interruption. I asked you that question. Can you go ahead and just talk to us a little bit? I was just totally surprised by this. I'm disappointed by this.
Yeah, so, you know, it was a situation with my daughter and a partner of hers, and when I arrived, you know, I had been on the phone with my daughter. She had told me what had happened, and so when I arrived, I was acting as a mom. I would, if I felt that someone was being, someone else's child was being treated unjustly, I would still have spoken up. I may not have used, you know, may not have mentioned my capacity with the city at the time, you know, had I received a, had I been fully trained. But I absolutely, if I saw injustice, would have spoken up. And that was what I saw at that time was the people who had attacked my daughter were not being interviewed and held accountable. And so I think for me showing up as a mom and seeing unjust treatment of my child, yes, I was speaking in the capacity of a parent.
And with that, you said that your daughter, and you can decide if you want to talk about it or not, because I literally listened to your story for an hour, you said your daughter had had negative experiences with the police before, so would like you to just talk on that a little bit. And then I told you upfront when I first met you, I mean, if I had just read the newspaper and never met you, I would have believed everything that I read, but it was like, you know, I had cognitive dissonance talking to you because I was like, wow, it seems like you're just protecting your family.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that you took that time to hear it, and I think that... I was scared. I was scared for how my daughter would be treated. She had been arrested for the first time when she was 17 protesting in front of East High School. Her rotator cuff had been torn by MPD when she was 17. That was the first time that she had police interaction. Then the next time that she had police interaction was that it was on my mother's front porch on Williamson Street, where she, again, was put into a police vehicle to be questioned, even though they were looking for someone entirely different, not her, but a person who she had been with, who was of interest, and they unlawfully detained her. So my daughter has received unfair, unjust treatment multiple times from MPD, and that was a major concern for me as her parent, that she might be physically or emotionally
And your daughter is, she's at UW or graduated, she's a nurse or something on that order, right? She's like a normal human, she's a normal human being, but I just, I just...
Very normal, yes, yes, Alder. She is a UW graduate. She is a People Scholar. She is a double major, and she currently works for the Urban League with middle schoolers.
Alder Latimer-Burris, additional questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you, Alder.
I have no other Alders in the queue with questions at this time, so thank you. That, I think you're, I think you're good.
Thank you, Alders. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, that then is the end of public comment. Alder Vitiver?
10-minute recess, please.
Moved and seconded to have a 10-minute recess. That brings us back at 9:36. All right, if we can have the Alders in the room, come back and take your seats, please, and other folks adjourn to the gallery, and the Alders on the Zoom. If you are able, please turn your cameras back on so I know you're there, so we can achieve the magic number. So we can achieve the magic number. All right, I will call the council back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alder Bennett. Conklin. Curry. Duncan. Evers. Field. Figueroa Cole. Govindarajan. Ugher. Harrington McKinney.
McKinney here.
Knox. Latimer Burris.
Here.
Madison. Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Miazze.
Present.
Rumel.
Present.
Tischler. Revere. Vitiver. And Wahelia is excused. Madam Mayor, we have form.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is item 33. Item 33 is Legisstar 86464 approving plans and specifications and authorizing the Board of Public Works to advertise and receive bids for the Imagination Center at Reindell Park. President Figueroa Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. On item 33, are there questions for staff? If there are no questions, oh, Alder Vitiver.
I had questions for Director Schmidicki.
Go ahead.
So I don't like this. I'm speaking here, but he's back here. I'm trying to understand, so the city has no actual financial, anything debt service yet still for this facility, right? Because it was purchased so long ago? Like, there's no debt service still on this?
We're talking about Reindell. We're talking about the Imagination Center.
I'm so sorry.
We're not there yet. We'll get there. I've no other Alders wishing to ask questions. On the Imagination Center, is there any discussion on item 33? Seeing no discussion, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 33? Seeing no objection, recorded unanimous vote in favor of item 33, and we will move on. Still not the ice arenas. To Alder Evers.
Start with a presentation from staff.
We're not to the ice arenas yet.
Oh, I thought you said.
Nope, nope, we're going to item 47 next, folks. Stick with us, folks, here. I'm trying to work it through. Item 47 is Legisstar 85413. A hearing read the Ethics Board complaint filed by Emily Sampson against Shadira Kilfoi Flores. On item 47, President Figueroa Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff on item 47? Seeing none, is there discussion on item 47? Seeing no, I'm sorry, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes, is there anyone that chairs or not chairs, but staffs the Ethics Board?
Yes, Alder, we have the attorney, Assistant City Attorney McReynolds staffs that body.
Okay, thank you. Assistant Attorney, could you please, in summary, say how the Ethics Board came to their conclusion and recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Alder. I think that it's well summarized in the report and recommendation to come in council. But basically, the way that it happened was there was a complaint. They first had the jurisdictional hearing and decided there was jurisdiction. And then a following meeting, they had the complaint hearing. And at that hearing, they heard from the complainant, they heard from the respondent, or, you know, from Ms. Kilfoi Flores and her attorney. And they watched the video clip of the interaction. They also heard, you know, some information that may not have been related necessarily, but they really focused on what happened on this incident, or at this incident that was the focus of the complaint. And then they went into closed session and, you know, debated or discussed what they had heard and then came up with this recommendation.
As a follow-up question, initially, there, the Ethics Board had to decide whether it was in their jurisdiction. And Ms. Flores had said that this was not under the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board. Could you summarize how they determined that this was indeed within their privy to make a decision on?
Yes, I did not hear Ms. Kilfoi Flores say that she didn't think there was jurisdiction. But I can answer that question. I think that when they're looking for jurisdiction, they look to see if a complaint was timely filed, which it was. They look to see if the complainant is someone who can be a complainant. In this case, it was a resident of the city of Madison, so that is a person who can make a complaint regarding the Ethics Code. They then, you know, make sure that the person who's being complained against can be complained against. And, you know, anyone who is a member of a board committee or commission is subject to the Ethics Code. And then they look at the allegations and see if those allegations are something that's even covered by the Ethics Code. So when they're making that jurisdictional decision, they're not right then deciding if there's a violation. They're just deciding if what is alleged is true, would that even be a violation? And in this case, it would. It would be, you know, the ordinance that was cited as the alleged, you know, alleging the conduct was a violation of that ordinance that is a violation, would be a violation of the Ethics Code. So that's how they determine jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison, questions?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I think I just have maybe two questions. Is, do you have any examples of, I don't know, a similar punishment, just to make a comparison? Like where, you know, something was found to be in violation and they chose to apply this? You know, someone can't be appointed for a year?
Yeah, that's a great question. The Ethics Board almost never receives complaints. So I don't have great examples of other violations that were complained about and then found as violations, and what kinds of recommendations the Ethics Board made for those. The other sort of examples that were given previously by some speakers were not complaints in front of the Ethics Board. They may have been other, you know, behavior that was talked about in other kinds of forums, but not a complaint in front of the Ethics Board. So the short answer is, we don't have good examples of this. The Board, you know, determines if there is a violation and then they talk about what kind of sanction, if any, they think is appropriate. And that's what they, what they recommended.
Thank you. My second question is, I went to maybe the first of the two meetings, because I don't think I could make the second one. But anyways, I remember at that first meeting, there was some, I don't want to say confusion, but there was some back and forth about the person making the complaint. And so I'm just curious, was it? Because I felt like in that meeting, we learned that the person making the complaint was part of the police union. And so tonight, I've heard some comments or just, you know, some comment about that. So can you help me understand when it became known that that person was, you know, either president, vice president, or some relationship with the police union?
My understanding is that the complainant filed the complaint as a resident of the city of Madison. But I think that that information was known right from the get-go of her complaint, because I think it's listed on the original complaint. I can double-check that right now, but I don't think it's like surprising or new information. It's something that was known from the start.
Gotcha, thank you.
Amber, given Alder Madison's question about the recommendations, do you want to just outline what the Ethics Code provides for, you know, what potential remedies are or consequences?
Sure. So the Ethics Code sort of suggests that if someone is found in violation, it's recommended to consider voluntary resignation. That's one thing that someone could do on their own if they're found in violation of the Ethics Code. It also could recommend for a board committee or a commission that the mayor consider removing the person from the board or otherwise sanctioning, censoring, or reprimanding the member. There's also a provision in subsection E that they could recommend filing a case in municipal court for forfeitures. That is something that they did not think was appropriate in this case. And then I put a note in the report and recommendation that because Ms. Kilfoi Flores's term had ended before the complaint hearing, that it wouldn't make sense for her to voluntarily resign or for the mayor to remove her from the board because her term had ended. So even though the conduct in question took place while she was a member of the board, by the time that it was heard, she was no longer a member of the board.
Oops, sorry, Mayor. Just a quick follow-up. The 12-month portion, could, you know, for example, could we do something different as far as the length of time? Or does this say it has to be 12 months?
Yeah, so my understanding is that this is the recommendation from the Board and it comes to the council. The council can choose to do what they want with it. So the council could, you know, accept the recommendation, reject the recommendation, change what they think the recommended sanction should be. I don't think that any of those choices would be inappropriate here. This is simply the recommendation from the Board to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other questions for staff? Seeing other questions, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion. It's been moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Madison?
Roll call, please.
Okay, now all of a sudden, we have lots of people wanting to speak. Alder Madison?
Oh, no, I was just not wanting a unanimous vote.
Right, requesting a roll call. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you wish to speak?
Yes, I do wish to speak. And I wish to speak because the complaint originally went through the Ethics Board. And the discussion was whether it was properly put before the Ethics Board. Was this something that they can consider? And the members of the Ethics Boards unanimously determined that it did come within the privy of the Ethics Board to consider. And so that led into the second presentation of the facts, and then they went into closed session. And so with the Ethics Board going into closed session and deliberating, and as they should, and coming out and making a recommendation to this body to uphold the sanction, and not just uphold the sanction, but to add the added one year not being able to serve on any committee. I think that that is key. Because, one, you're looking at the then-chair of a committee that evaluates pub comments, not comments, but evaluates behaviors of the police. And if my neighbor was in that same situation, my neighbor would not say, "Do you know who I am?" My neighbor would not say, "I'm going to contact JP." My neighbor would not say that I'm going to call Sean Barnes. And so because of her position, she used that position to get favoritism. That is not fair. She is not above the law. And the ordinary citizen would not have been able to use those references in that particular situation. And so that's why I am absolutely going to support the recommendation of the Ethics Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
I was just gonna say a roll call vote.
Roll call's been requested. Is there further discussion?
No, not for me.
Thank you, Alder. Seeing no further discussion, motion is to adopt. A roll call's been requested. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Bennett? Skipping Conklin? Skipping Curry?
Abstain.
Curry is abstaining. Duncan? Aye. Evers?
No.
No. Field?
Aye.
Aye. Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Ugher?
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Knox?
Abstain.
Knox is abstaining. Latimer Burris?
Abstain.
Abstain. Madison?
No.
No. Martinez Rutherford?
I too am going to abstain.
Abstain. Miazze?
Abstain.
Abstain. Rumel?
Abstain.
Abstain. Tischler? Aye. Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Vitiver? Aye. Wahelia is excused. Alder Bennett? No. Conklin?
No.
No. So that's nine ayes, four noes, and five, six abstains.
With nine ayes, the motion fails. And we'll move on to item 50. Item 50 is Legisstar 86169. Now we're talking about ice rinks. Authorizing the eventual forgiveness of debt held by Madison Ice Incorporated for the Madison Ice Arena and Hartmar Ice Arena, and authorizing the termination of existing land contracts for both, authorizing the fee simple sale to the various nonprofits, and authorizing a fundraising requirement, et cetera. On item 50, President Figueroa Cole.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. It has been requested that staff give a brief presentation. Director Mikulajewski.
Just one second while I share my screen. I just sent the request to share my screen. I'm not sure who that goes to.
I'm not sure you can do it that way. I'm not sure you can do it that way. Can you send your presentation to the clerk just in case? And Ariana, can you help us out?
Yep, I just got a request, so now it looks like multiple presenters can share.
Okay. Try now.
Perfect. One second. I just need to bring it back up here now because it got closed. All right, this one's back. Now I just need to bring Zoom back. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For those watching at home, I'm Matt Mikulajewski, the Economic Development Director, and I have a brief presentation that provides an overview of Legisstar 86169. By way of background, this evening, we are talking about the two ICE arenas, Hartmire and Madison ICE Arena. As discussed by our public speakers this evening, they provide a variety of different ICE sports. There's over 16,000 annual users with between 400,000 and 450,000 annual visits to both facilities. The city of Madison owned and operated both facilities for many years. We, in the early 2000s, the city subsidy to operate these facilities was approaching $250,000 per year. And as such, the city began to review options for the future of the ICE arenas. A committee was set up and the decision was made by the city to sell both arenas to the newly formed nonprofit Madison ICE, Inc. And this land sale was via a land contract for just over $1 million in 2004. Madison ICE, Inc. has owned and operated both ICE arenas since 2004. The city has not provided an operating subsidy during this 20-year period. They have paid the city over $446,000 toward their land contract. They've also, since 2010, invested over $5 million into capital improvements within both buildings. The city refinanced the land contract debt in 2011, and we then refinanced the debt and provided an additional $1 million capital improvement loan in 2017. Payments were made for the city debt, both the land contract and the capital improvement loan, from 2004 to 2020. The city then once again restructured debt in 2021, requiring $0 of payments in 2021 due to the pandemic. In 2021, the restructured payment plan would have required principal and interest payments of about $120,000 per year from 2022 until January 2028, when a final balloon payment of just over $1 million was due to the city. No payments have been made since 2020, and the current outstanding debt, which includes the original land contract and the 2017 capital improvement loan, is $1.6 million. Just to provide a little background on Madison ICE, Inc., it cost about $1.4 million for them to operate both ICE arenas. You can see their revenue and loss over the past four years. In some years, they make a little money; in some years, they lose a little money. And their cash available at the end of their last fiscal year, which was April 30th of this year, was $178,000. Hartmire ICE Arena, as discussed tonight, requires what we estimate to be about $3 million of new capital improvements, which include a new roof, new chiller HVAC compressor equipment, as well as upgraded electric transformers. Madison ICE Arena will likely, in the years ahead, continue to require capital investment, but is not as significant as Hartmire. Madison ICE, Inc. recognized that they are in default of their loan agreement, and they started to have conversations with the city in 2023 regarding this outstanding debt and the need for significant capital improvements to Hartmire ICE Arena. Again, Madison ICE, Inc. currently recognizes that they are in default of their loan agreement. And as the city has structured the sale of those arenas back in 2004 as land contracts, the city does reserve the right to take back title to those properties. So we really have three options to move forward at a very broad level. Obviously, there's sort of hybrid versions of these. But at a very broad level, the city could take back title to the properties, shut down the ICE arenas, and use the properties for something else. The city could take back the properties, make the investment that's needed in Hartmire ICE Arena, additional improvements to Madison ICE Arena, resume operations as city facilities, or the city can identify a privately-led fundraising and operating solution that does not require additional expenditure of city funds. As staff, we were directed to work on that last option, which is to identify and present you, the common council, with a privately-led solution to keep the ICE arenas open without a need for the expenditure of additional city funds. Madison ICE, Inc. brought East Madison ICE Collective to the table as part of this solution. EMIC, as discussed tonight, is a new nonprofit with an interest in owning and operating Hartmire, and they've committed to raise $3 million for the needed capital improvements for Hartmire. To raise $3 million from the private sector, EMIC believes that they need to show a path to long-term ownership of the Hartmire ICE Arena, as well as a path toward forgiveness of the outstanding debt associated with the property, given the challenges with raising funds for existing debt. Prior to completing the property transfers and loan restructuring that's contemplated in this resolution, EMIC would need to raise this $3 million, or the equivalent of in-kind services, to make these necessary improvements to Hartmire within three years. So again, nothing contemplated in this resolution would occur unless EMIC raises those funds or the equivalent to make those specific improvements within a three-year period. So what's in the resolution that's before you this evening? Assuming EMIC raises this $3 million, within three years, the following is contemplated. First, the city would terminate its existing land contract with Madison ICE, Inc. for the Hartmire ICE Arena. And this property would be transferred from Madison ICE, Inc., that they currently hold the title, to EMIC for a dollar. So in other words, Madison ICE, Inc. wouldn't make any money off of this transfer. The property would simply be transferred from Madison ICE, Inc. to EMIC. The existing debt of that outstanding $1.6 million that's associated with Hartmire, which is about $1.2 million, would be restructured as a forgivable loan between the city and EMIC to be forgiven over a 15-year period. For the first five years of those 15 years, none of the debt would be forgiven. And then in years six through 15, each of those 10 years, 10% of the debt would be forgiven. And in order for that debt to be forgiven, EMIC would need to continue to operate the ICE Arena. Madison ICE, Inc. in turn would continue to own and operate the Madison ICE Arena on the West Side. The city would terminate its existing land contract and effectively transfer full ownership of the property to Madison ICE, Inc., again, for no additional cost, for effectively a dollar. The existing debt associated with Madison ICE Arena, which is about $328,000, would be also restructured as a forgivable loan over a 15-year period. And again, in year zero to five, no forgiveness would be provided. And then in year six to 15, 10% of the outstanding debt would be reduced for every year that Madison ICE, Inc. continues to operate the Madison ICE Arena. During the three-year fundraising period, there would be no expectation of payment on these loans, and we would enter into a formal deferment agreement in that regard. The Legisstar, this resolution also contemplates that EMIC and Madison ICE, Inc. would each be required to maintain a cash reserve equivalent to 25% of their annual operating expenses to cover unanticipated capital and operating needs. A deed restriction would be placed on both properties, requiring that they be continued use as sports and recreation facilities. The city would have the ability to negotiate the release of these deed restrictions at a future date if one or both nonprofits desire to cease operations of one or both ICE arenas, and we may request compensation at that time. So just to stand this point a little bit, you know, there's been conversation about what happens in the future if one of the ICE arenas close. Would the, you know, potentially, the nonprofits be able to sell one or both of the properties for private development and make money off of that sale? This deed restriction would require that only sports and recreation uses are allowed on the property. So for example, they couldn't construct housing on the property unless that deed restriction was released. And the city, as the entity that puts the deed restriction on the property, would have the ability to negotiate that release, and we could ask for some compensation if, in fact, the intent is to shut the arena down and sell the property to a private developer for private development. So there's really two primary policy questions as part of this resolution. The first is whether or not there's a public interest in keeping the ICE arenas open. And then the second is whether or not policymakers support providing EMIC with three years to attempt to raise $3 million, leading to the restructuring of ownership and debt as outlined in Legisstar 86169. Just providing a summary of the primary options graphically. Again, the first option is that the ICE arenas close, that the city takes back the property, the ICE arena's closed. So there's two possible scenarios of what would happen. And the first is that the sites would be redeveloped to maximize a return. So the sale would make money on the sale of the property. Each property is worth millions of dollars. There would be no additional capital operating costs associated with the ICE arenas because they would be closed down. And we would definitely be repaid our existing debt through those land sale proceeds. A slight caveat to this is that if the city required that the sites be redeveloped for affordable housing, as we all know, the city provides significant investment of city funds into affordable housing projects in the community. So the actual net proceeds that we receive would likely be reduced. Again, no costs associated with operating the arenas because they've been closed. And we still probably would make enough money to repay our existing debt out of sale proceeds. The other scenarios are the ICE arenas stay open. Regardless of who owns and operates the ICE arenas, we know that Hartmire needs about $3 million of investment. The roof is failing, some of the other mechanical equipment is failing, and it needs to be completely replaced. One approach is city ownership. We would not, in the short run, make any land sale proceeds off of this because the ICE arenas are still open. Years in the future, who knows? Maybe we would. There would be capital costs to the city, about $3 million for Hartmire, with additional capital expenses for Madison ICE Arena. It's not clear what the operating costs would be for the city, but there might be some. And our existing debt would not be repaid because in this case, we have the property under city ownership. The approach that's outlined in this resolution, the private approach to keeping the ICE arenas open, in terms of land proceeds to the city, it's the same as whether we owned it or not because, again, the ICE arenas are still in place. But the capital cost to the city is zero under this proposal. The capital costs would be borne by East Madison ICE Collective through their fundraising campaign. Likewise, the operating cost is zero. That would continue to be borne by Madison ICE, Inc. and East Madison ICE Collective. The debt would not be repaid to the city, as has been discussed. But that would be the case if we owned and operated the ICE arenas as well. So again, in summary, looking at kind of these three broad options. The first is the property's returned to the city with the ICE arenas closed. This is the most financially beneficial to the city as it's the least costly to us. Our existing debt would be repaid at no additional city expense, but the arenas would be closed under this scenario. If the properties are returned to the city with the ICE arenas remaining open, this is really the least financially beneficial to the city as it would be the most costly, given that our existing debt would not be repaid and it would require millions of additional city expense. The resolution before you is sort of a compromise between those two. It's a mix of financial benefit and cost. On the one hand, our existing debt is not repaid. But on the other hand, we also do not have any additional city expense associated with this option. So what are the next steps for moving forward? Assuming the council approves this resolution this evening, the city, Madison ICE, Inc. and EMIC would spend the next six months negotiating a master agreement that would outline all of the various agreements and transactions that would need to occur to move this forward. Once that master agreement is negotiated and executed, EMIC would then have three years to raise $3 million for the capital improvements needed for Hartmire ICE Arena or the equivalent of in-kind services. If successful, then, in accordance with the master agreement, the properties would be transferred and the loan closings would be completed as contemplated in the resolution. If EMIC is unsuccessful, then we would be back as a city to revisit potential next steps for the future of the ICE arenas. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Matt. Questions for staff?
Alder Vitiver. Matt, since you're still there, so my first question is, the Madison ICE, Inc. could theoretically sell to EMIC now regardless of any city action. Is that true? Or are they restricted by the land contract that exists now?
So just to repeat the question. So the question is, could Madison ICE, Inc. sell the property to EMIC now without any action on the part of the city?
Right. Like, does that, like, I guess I'm just trying to understand, why is that contingent on this resolution? Aside from the fact that it's just kind of part of this whole deal?
Yep. So, and, you know, I'll look to Attorney Haas for some help with this. But right now, there is a loan with the city for that capital improvement loan that was completed in, or provided in 2017, plus there's the original land contract. I suspect, and I haven't looked at this specifically, but I suspect somewhere in that loan agreement or the land contract, there is a requirement that if the property is assigned to someone else, that the city has to approve that assignment. So most likely, there is something in one of those agreements that would require them to come to the city.
And then my other question is, that million-dollar loan, I mean, I'm just, it's clearly not under the loan programs that we have now because we don't have anything that's that size, and it wasn't designed to be forgivable, like all of our other loan programs. So I guess, can you help us understand how that million-dollar loan came about?
I was personally not involved at the time. I believe that the decision was made to just provide a loan. You know, there's certainly examples where the city does sort of a one-off type of a project, and I think this is an example of that back in 2017.
Okay. I have other questions for Director Schmidke, so I'll let others talk to Matt first.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry, questions?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Matt. Matt, could you quickly walk us through, if this is approved and goes through, what steps within the three-year process the city would be checking in with the entities about progress of the goal, et cetera, to... I'm thinking hypothetically to avoid a situation that in three years, we may be back in the same situation.
Sure. I mean, I think that, you know, we, you know, I can speak for myself personally and the city at a more institutional level. You know, obviously, I've been very involved in the conversations with EMIC and Madison ICE, Inc. in recent months. You know, I think that as that three-year period is moving along, I suspect that we would just have regular contact, sort of informally, on whether or not, you know, they are meeting their fundraising needs. At a more formal institutional level, we could likely negotiate in the master agreement that they periodically provide us with updates as to how their fundraising strategy is occurring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the public testimony raised the question of our success with public-private partnerships. And so everyone knows I had reached out to Matt before finance, and we discussed this. And Matt kind of suggested this is not a good idea. And if Matt could sort of elaborate on, I know it's a personal opinion, but it affected my decision, if he could explain your thinking on that.
Just to clarify, you're asking sort of my opinion on why we shouldn't have a public-private partnership and why we should move in a direction where there's greater separation between the city and the ICE arenas?
Yes.
Sure. So, and again, this is my personal opinion. But if you look back at the history of the city's relationship with the ICE arenas since 2004, you know, through this land contract, we've always kind of had a contractual relationship with the ICE arenas. And so as a result, you know, the ICE arenas, on several occasions, came to restructure the debt in 2017. They received an additional loan. I think moving towards a path where we have greater separation, which is to say that ultimately, assuming they're successful, the existing debt's forgiven, the property transfers are fee simple, which means they own them free and clear, I think that creates a greater level of separation and between the city and the ICE arenas. So they would be very similar then to... So they would be very similar then to many, many other nonprofits throughout our community that own and operate facilities. Certainly, other nonprofits come to the city to request assistance from time to time, but there isn't a sort of special relationship between the city and those nonprofits in those cases. And then the city makes a decision on whether or not it wants to provide support. So it basically puts the two nonprofits on a similar footing to many of the other nonprofits that we work with.
Thank you. And I guess my other question, I had sort of, you know, those of you who know my line history, I have this special place in my heart for Garver. So I asked you, why can't the city own the land and sell the improvements, you know, the building? And so that sort of fits in the same answer, but we have that as a successful model. And I'm just wondering if you could just say a little bit more about the nuance of that kind of option?
Sure. So there are certainly examples within the city and elsewhere with other organizations in the community where people have land leases, where one entity owns the land and another entity owns the buildings that are on top of the land. As you mentioned, you know, that's the situation that we have with Garver. We have homes in a couple of city parks that are in a similar situation. And again, it continues that relationship between the city and those respective entities. And we're seeing this today with, for example, some of the conversations around some of the homes that are located in city parks and, you know, do we change those agreements and the like? And so, again, it just, it, it, the approach that's outlined in this resolution creates greater separation between the nonprofits and the city. A land lease would keep a relationship with the two entities.
And my, my last question is, can you share, if you know of any examples of forgiveness of debt that we have undergone?
We certainly, as a city, negotiate debt forgiveness with some of the business development programs that we run, other, I know, programs that we've run throughout the city. Admittedly, though, typically, that forgiveness is negotiated upfront. This is somewhat unique in that we are forgiving the debt after the fact. But we certainly have forgivable loans elsewhere in the city for other city programs.
And also selling land for a dollar is not, has been done before?
Yes. In recent years, we have provided land to Central Hispano to assist with their new facility and also the Urban League for the Black Business Hub.
And also, in my, going back to my own history at Union Corners, I believe we sold the land for a dollar. Thank you, Mayor. That's all for now.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hey, Matt, I was just wondering, has a racial analysis study been conducted for the purpose of the ice arena? And if not, would your department support initiating one to ensure access and economic opportunities for all communities?
So I believe the question is, has an RSGI analysis been completed for this transaction that's before you? And a formal analysis has not been completed. You know, as discussed this evening, and actually, as you, as you can read in the original land contract, there is certainly a desire to maintain affordability and accessibility for the ice arenas. And, you know, it's certainly something that we could continue to encourage of the nonprofits.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris, questions?
Yeah, Matt, I have a couple, and thank you so much. We spent a lot of time together. I think I came down with a lot of questions, 150, 50 or more. Just real quick, let's see. I'm trying to get them in order here. So you talked about the three solutions, and then when we did the community outreach meeting, you also had said that there's some, there can be some different solutions within those three major categories. Is that correct?
Sure. I mean, I, you know, those, those three solutions are sort of at the very broad level, but obviously, there's details associated with any of those approaches, and there's likely sort of sub-variants of those more broad approaches.
Okay. And then also, I just, and I asked you this before, I think both at the community meeting and the economic development meeting, maybe it was the finance, one of them, I just reiterated that it was never on the table to just close the ice arenas. I mean, it has, we have a long history, don't we, of supporting it? And it's just been back and forth over 50 years of doing these kind of deals or different deals. Is that correct?
I mean, it is on the table. It is an option that the council has. They could take back the land and close the ice arenas.
Okay. But, but, but it was pretty strong, even the opposition was strong, that nobody wanted to close the ice arena, right?
I'm not hearing a lot of people advocating for closing the ice arenas, no.
Okay. And then I was going to ask you about a 99-year lease, but it sounds like you're saying that just ties us into it. What about, did we get to do any vetting as far as like, who's best to run these ice arenas? When I looked at the history, going back and forth, it seems like, you know, it's been a lot of nonprofits or different private organizations running it. And then, as you were explaining to me, they just seem to come back to the city. So what kind of vetting have we done on EMIC? And MII is, we've already dealt with, they're the ones that defaulted. So.
Sure. So EMIC, if you look at their board, it includes a number of individuals that obviously have an interest in the ice arenas and an interest in the activities that occur there. It also includes individuals that have corporate experience, experience running businesses, and individuals that, in their early fundraising efforts, have made connections with individuals that have indicated a willingness to contribute financially to the fundraising campaign.
And so when we did the proposals with, like, Central Hispano and Urban League, what's the typical process of diligence there? Do we vet them? Do we look at feasibility studies? Do we do different things on that order? And why haven't we, if we do, what's normal? And why, why are we veering from this?
So, I mean, I wouldn't say that this scenario is, is normal from the standpoint that, you know, we don't kind of forgive debt and land contracts on a regular basis. It's not something, you know, this is sort of a unique situation. So I think, you know, it's challenging to compare it exactly like other things that we work on. You know, some of the other projects that you mentioned didn't have significant studies done by the city either. It really depends on the project and the path that the council wants to go down in terms of the type of study that the council would like to complete prior to supporting a given project within the community.
But with Urban League, because I know that, like, that came up, and Central Hispano, which are two, a black and brown organization, they just, we did this, like, we just did this deal. We didn't look at any other numbers. We didn't have any conversations there. We just did it and presented it to the council?
Well, we did ask for, to see their financials and proof of financing before we closed on the transaction. So certainly, before we moved forward with actually providing them with the property, we had due diligence from their financial capability. But at the upfront point, I don't believe we required them to sort of have, we didn't do any sort of in-depth analysis of our own relative to the operations of those facilities.
But we internally vetted the Urban League and the Central Hispano, I imagine, and even the person that took over Garver Mill, right?
I mean, we vetted from the standpoint that we certainly looked at, you know, what their proposal was, whether or not their proposal was realistic. But we did that in the case of EMIC and Hartmeier. So EMIC has a business plan. They have a fundraising plan. We did take a look at it.
Is that the business plan that's in the record, the executive summary?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And so we don't have, we don't know, like, how, you know, I'm trying to get at, how are we not going to put them in a situation where they're going to run into the same situation again?
I mean, I think there's, you know, first and foremost, they have three years to show that they can complete the fundraising campaign. You know, they, there is no guarantee that they will meet that. And then, you know, we'll have to regroup if that is the case. And in terms of the, you know, long-term operations of the facilities, you know, as is the case today, it's, they're, they are facilities that require a lot of work. It's hard to run an ice arena. I think that that's been made pretty clear by some of our speakers this evening. But it's not clear that there are other entities ready in the wings to kind of step in and do it any better than the two nonprofits that are before us this evening.
So have we stepped out and to see if there's anybody else that's interested in that in the wings? Or we just, or were you just directed to work with EMIC to find a solution?
We have not, because just by way of reminding everyone, Madison Ice, Inc. currently owns both of the ice arenas. They recognize that they, you know, need to do something different, and they were the ones that brought EMIC to the city. So this is Madison Ice, Inc.'s attempt to work with the city to find a solution to the problem that they know currently exists.
And so that brings you to Alder Viderver's question about the ownership of it. And you may not be able to answer this, maybe it's Attorney Haas can, but when you default on a land contract, and if we would exercise our right, then the property comes back to us. And the reason I'm asking is this kind of right, the reason that they can't just, they can sell it because there's no deed restriction when it was renegotiated, there's no deed restriction, but they have busted their land contract. So it's, I mean, this gets around this. Is that correct?
Well, so the current land contract has cure provisions within it and notice provisions. And so if the council wanted to pursue foreclosure on the properties, the land contract outlines the process for doing that. And the city attorney's office, you know, at that point, it would likely move from my office to the city attorney's office, and the city attorney's office would move forward with foreclosure on the properties.
And so when you talk about Kier, and I asked this, I think, in the community meeting, the economic development meeting, I don't think I got to it in finance because, you know, been asking too many questions, is like, if they got the $1.6 million today, they raised it, Madison Ice Arena, they could pay it off and then split the property with EMIC. They can't just transfer it today. They got to come through us. They can't transfer it today because they're in default, and we would probably enforce the contract. If they just said, okay, I'm going to sell this, screw the city, I'm going to sell this to them, they can't do it, right?
Correct, because I, there's an outstanding loan that I think legally, they can't just assign to someone else without coming to us first.
Okay. And then my last question, thank you. And I know that when I talked to you in the very beginning, Alder Kier and I, you know, it was like, I mean, you were like, go see how complicated this is. And I did. I went and spent a lot of hours to see the complications. Talking about, last question. Will this master agreement that all of these things that are unsettled, will it be coming back to us as a council where we get to vote on it? And then how many votes will that be? And I'll tell you why I'm asking this, this question. I've spent a lot of time on this and thinking about talking to people, including attorneys, about their, you know, attorney-ish opinion. Of course, they're not, they don't work for the city, but right now, the land contract seems to be the only thing that we have that stops an entity from doing whatever it wants to do. So I'm going to give you an example so that, just for clarification of my question, if you don't mind. I sit on the airport commission, and with Ramish Farm, there was this airspace that, there was an easement that, you know, the Dane County had a right to, that was made like, I don't know, 50s or 60s or something. And the attorney came to us and said, yeah, we could, we were right, and we could fight them, but they want to give us $400,000 for it today, and it will cost us more to be right. And so I'm wondering, if we know that this has busted a couple of times, do we get to, as council, ensure that this master agreement is not just everything that's said verbally because it gets lost in the city's maze, but that actually, we, it has some teeth to it, and we're watching it? We want them to be successful, but we also don't want to be battling, you know, somebody 15 to 20 years down the road and then getting all that emotional energy that we want to close ice arenas when we've been doing ice arena since 1960. So does the master agreement come back to us? Or is that something that you guys will internally work out?
The master agreement would not come back to the council. The resolution before you this evening authorizes the city attorney's office to negotiate that master agreement, and then it authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign it. So we would take the language that's in the resolution this evening, and we would, well, I shouldn't say me because I'm not an attorney, the city attorney's office would prepare those legal documents and negotiate that master agreement.
So we won't see it again, ever?
Well, you will certainly, I mean, it's a public document, so you can see it, you will see it, it's publicly available.
No, but I mean, we won't see it where we can have any teeth around it or anything to make sure it's done, done right. We're just doing this on good faith, good faith, right?
Yes, you are doing it in good faith, that the city attorney's office will take the language in the resolution and translate it into legal documents.
Okay. And that's, I did say that's the last, but I have to ask the follow-up question. This is the fourth time that it's gone through, like, attorneys, like, this last time, and now I actually know why they didn't, like, put a deed restriction on it, but the last time, they didn't, they didn't have a deed restriction. So it's like, EMIC believed in MII, let's be honest, and said, dudes, we're going to help you raise the 1.6 and pay it off. There's nothing the city could do about it. It was never even put in there. So that's what you're saying, that we're going to, it's going to happen again? But we're going to do that, right?
No. No. So, so just to be clear, and just to, just to clarify, so.
Yeah.
There was language in the original land contract and in the, the renegotiation in 2011 that did actually specify that while those land contracts were out there, that they did have to be used for ice arenas. So there was, like, they wouldn't have been able to, like, sell the property during the course of those land contracts. But once those land contracts were paid off per their repayment schedule, then yes, the Madison Ice, Inc. would have owned the property free and clear and could have done anything that it wanted to with the property at that time. But we will, under, as noted in the resolution, the resolution calls on there being a deed restriction put on the properties. And so we would prepare a deed restriction, and when we go to close, put that on each of the properties.
Okay. And then, so is that, so that looks like, and then the original, what about the 2004 contract was there when that was under Mayor Dave? Was that put in there, the deed restriction? And then the other question that I wanted to say, and then I promise you I'm done because I've really spent way too much time on this, is if we don't own, is that deed restriction like an easement where we, where it's really powerful? Or is it like one where it's like, you know, it's on the deed, but it's not, you know, if we don't, so what, let me ask it differently. Just a second. Let me just clarify. Let me ask in a simple way. If there's no land left to restrict a deed, then it has no teeth, right? That's one of the problems we ran, we're running into with the airport commission and whatnot. There's no, there's no teeth if we don't, you know, it's like illusory.
Alder, a deed restriction stays with the land. It's literally recorded on the deed.
I, you know, I spent 10 years in foreclosure law. I think I, I'm not a lawyer, but I understand it. But there's ways around it. There's different ways around it. So I'm just trying to get at that, and hopefully, the city attorney will catch all the different ways you can get around it. But scratch the last question because it's just really technical and in the weeds, and you have to understand foreclosure and deeds to do that. Thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington-McKinnon, questions?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Matt, there was a, an email or a report that was sent to all alders, and I'm, I'm hoping that you received it. And it was from, well, let me just reference it. The, the email cited a list of things that could be done other than making a decision tonight about approval or disapproval. And one of the things that the, the writer recommended is, or questions that I have, is that were there any subject matter experts involved in the process of decisions and making a recommendation that's before us? Was a facilities assessment report done? And finally, was there a campaign, a capital campaign feasibility study incorporated in all of the decision-making process? Were any of those, I lifted those three, because that's what I asked for, three. Were any of these lifted up in the overall discussion about what the city should, what works best for the city? Yes or no?
Well, so I, I can kind of take them one by one. So first, relative to a facility study, so Madison Ice Inc. has done a review of what is needed within Hartmire Ice Arena and Madison Ice Arena as well, although that's not as significant. And they've been in conversations with EMIC about what is needed. They received quotes from contractors for what it would cost to make those improvements. They then shared that information with City Engineering Facilities. City Engineering Facilities and I walked through the facilities with Madison Ice Inc. City Facilities reviewed those quotes that were provided, and concur that they appear to be a reasonable estimate of the major capital investments that are needed in Hartmire. Now, you know, City Engineering would be the first to say, you know, they, they did not complete an exhaustive facility study. But certainly, we looked at the due diligence that MI, Madison Ice Inc. and EMIC completed, and it appeared to be reasonable. Your other question was around whether or not EMIC did a sort of, you know, maximum capacity for fundraising study. I really don't know the answer to that. I know that, you know, in conversations with EMIC, you know, identifying that there's $3 million of need, EMIC feels confident that they can raise $3 million. As was noted, both of these ice arenas will forever need private fundraising to make improvements. Madison Ice Inc. has raised millions of dollars over the past 20 years, and has made over $5 million since 2010 worth of capital improvements. So there, there will never be an end to the fundraising for these two facilities.
Okay. And I just found my notes, and that was Alex Salutos. Did you read the email that he sent to all alders? Were you included in that?
Yes, I've, I've seen that email.
Okay, okay. Could you, and all that we have talked about over these past few minutes, what would your estimate be? And I'll expand when we go into discussion, but I just want your overall estimation of what, what your content for?
I'm sorry, I don't understand my, my content.
So when you, when you, when you read the report that, the email that was submitted by Alex Salutos, what is a summary? What did you gather? Have we done all the things that we needed to do related to what he was recommending in his email?
I mean,
referencing the city?
Yeah. So I mean, I, I think the city has done many of those things. We, we haven't done it, you know, we, there wasn't a formal body put together, you know, a formal task force as, as recommended in the email to, to do that. But, you know, we certainly, you know, worked with our colleagues in city engineering. You know, I've had conversations with folks in our parks department that know more about ice arenas than I did. You know, we've had conversations with finance, we've, you know, worked with MI, Madison Ice Inc. and EMIC. So we have, we've done a lot of what was recommended within that email, but we have not had sort of that formal task force as, as is recommended.
Hey, thank you very much. The rest of the questioning I will include during discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions?
Yeah, I just had a, just a little clarification from Matt. So, you know, I heard people do the comparison of, well, we've done a couple of other transfers to different nonprofits and, but would you say, Matt, that, I would assume that the central transaction was a lot, wasn't as complex? I mean, you did a land swap, basically. And then I would assume, I don't know this, but I would assume the Urban League had some assets before they decided to build into that project at the village. So would you agree those were not as complicated as obviously this transaction has been, these transactions have been over the years?
I would actually argue that the Urban League project is more complicated. I mean, we, we constructed a new parking structure, we, there was major sewer line issues, there was, there was a lot going on with that project. That was far more complicated than the ice arenas.
All right, all right. Did they have some assets though, to offer though, on the front end, before that happened? I, I know they were in another building before that. I would assume there was some sales of that building and, you know,
No, Alder, the Urban League is still in the same building, and, and they
No, I'm talking about previously. I'll go back history here, before they were on that site. But we, well, I'm not going to revisit it, because I don't know what happened in that transaction. But my point is, this has been something that's obviously pretty complex, been going on for quite a while. And I agree with you, Matt. You want to see some decisive, either separation or decision made relative to this project? Is that kind of what you were kind of alluding to?
Yes.
With these options?
Yes. I mean, my, in my personal opinion, I think creating greater separation between the city and the nonprofits that run the ice arenas is in our long-term better interest.
Okay. Now, what you're familiar with, because when I think about it, I think there are opportunities to have what we call public-private partnerships, you know. But most of the time, it seems like the public people control the land, and then maybe the, the private sector just do the operations or something like that. That's more typical. But obviously, with this land contract, it's getting a little more complicated. So I was just, I was just trying to clarify the comparisons that people were making with, with these other transactions. And I'll reserve anything else I want to comment on in, when we get into discussion.
Thank you, Alder. I have another Alders in the queue with questions. Alder, oh, Alder Vittiver.
Hey, now, feeling like we're done with Matt. Questions for Director Schmidke. So trying to understand, there is no remaining debt service on these buildings, is that correct? For the, from the city?
There is outstanding GO debt on the 2017, or debt that was issued as a part of the resolution and capital budget adopted by the council at that time. So there's still three years of debt service payments on that debt.
That the city is paying on that?
That the city is paying, that's correct.
Okay. That's helpful. Okay. I think that's my big question then, because I had it wrong. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole, questions?
Thank you. I have a question for Eric Knapp.
Superintendent Knapp is here. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you. So the former mayor mentioned earlier, or decided to compare the ice arenas management to the golf enterprise that the city has, as a way to express how well the city manages sport facilities. So I know I've only been, I've only been a world parks commissioner for just four years, so I, I don't know much of the history before this. But golf, golf is something that we discuss often, where the, before the pandemic, was the golf enterprise a successful operation? Like, did it, did it make money?
Certainly not. No. The 30, 30 years from 1992-ish to roughly 30 years, 1990, 92 to 2019, the golf enterprise lost money in all but three years.
And so what, once the new administration came on board, what, how did that, how was that managed? Was there any action to figure out how to make golf successful?
Yeah. The, the mayor, the mayor, Mayor Woods-Conway, was brief, pretty quickly coming into office and directed staff, we did create a, a task force in that one because the determination was that, you know, we didn't know what the outcome would be. And the first question was, do we want municipal golf at all? Well, that task force went through in a very rigorous process, did a lot of recommendations, a lot of which are really impactful. But, you know, since 2020, and certainly the biggest bump here has been COVID. The COVID definitely reconnected people and brought new people to the game of golf, and it's been very financially successful since then. I'm very proud of our staff who does a lot of hard work to make that, all that work happen, and it's a big part of the story. But I, I would not say our historic trend of running an enterprise for recreation is a clear, easy, financial, sustainable model. And we still have, to this day, we've had profitable years the last five, we still have a serious capital needs issue to address.
On the golf courses, correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And I know that there is a lot of questions about equity, and I have to admit, it was the one thing that I immediately gave me pause on, on this deal. So would you say that golf is a sport that is considered an equitable sport, that is used by all different populations in the city of Madison?
I, I would, I would argue that certainly our golf courses, the, the golf world is in American, American golf has a really negative history with sexism and racism. I think our municipal golf program has always provided and been welcoming to everyone. I think we have a very diverse constituency. Probably our biggest disproportionate element is we have a lot of folks between the ages of 14 and 24, and 56 plus, right? And honestly, that's the story of COVID. We actually brought back a lot of that middle-aged demographic to the game. But yeah, I do, I do think of us providing services to, to everyone, but is it, we don't collect data on a day-to-day basis, and I can't say it's exactly reflective. But predominantly across the country, the history of the game of golf has some negatives.
Thank you. And to address some of that negative impact or that, that we see on the sport, we had some, can you please talk about the intentionality of changing the Glenn course to make it more inclusive and available, not just for the sport, but just to use the, to have a more, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but to use the land in a way that it was just meant for multiple activities. So like, can you speak about how much effort was that? And also where the funding came from that? Was that city money? And how, how have we managed to get that operation running?
No, certainly. And it's a, it's a great question. I would, again, I'd love to give my staff all the credit in the world for all we've done. We've done a lot. The task force actually recommended a lot on resgie, inclusion, diversity of experience. A really generous donor came forward that helped with the capital, Michael, Michael and Justin Kaiser, with the capital needs, the Glenn and expertise. But from that, the vision was set to try to be more inclusive and more diverse in programming, to make it truly a special place. It was a ton of work. It took a ton of stars aligning, a world-class golf course owner and developer, willing to write a big check with really no conditions, and having a vision of more than golf. It took a staff to make that happen. Those resources came from, again, for the construction, from the private, private sector, which, by the way, I want to be very clear, unprecedented in the park systems history of just an unfettered donation in that way. But it was a lot of work. It would take a ton of work to replicate, it's had some really good results, with the resources coming in, flowing in from the golf enterprise itself, with that successful rebound. But tons of work, it refor, I guess this is a way to say it, refocusing and reformatting and moving a, an enterprise in a public sector environment into a profitable, sustainable model, and a socially sustainable model, is, is a hell of a lot of work.
So do you, how, what, what would be the vision of, you know, for your, with your experience, how much financial strength, financial issue would it be for the city to take back those ice arenas in the conditions that they currently are?
A lot. I mean, I would have serious concerns in, in the capital stack needed. I personally, this is my personal opinion, not having inspected or done a facility assessment personally at Hartmire in recent years. I visited in 2017 when the refinancing happened and talked to them about some of the needs and the roof and the like. But serious capital need. So you have, what you have is you have a, you have pretty well maxed out capacity. This is a different story from golf, too, right? The ice time's being sold. It's being sold at reasonable rates to people who really need and enjoy that. And you heard programs that are being offered that are wonderful. But you don't even have more ice to sell, right? So you don't have product to sell, but you have a capital need to recover that you have to depreciate if you're going to run it like a real business, which, by the way, is in the 80s and 90s, one of the challenges here. The city didn't run it that way. Same with golf. We ran them like a cash business instead of a real business, the difference being we ignored the capital depreciation. Same story in both enterprises in that timeframe. Just very clearly what happened. But that leads to, that you also have an operating gap that you've seen in recent years, that nonprofits kind of been up and down. As a city, the last time we had it was 200,000. So you're looking at, you know, a very potentially sizable operating impact and a capital need. And on that capital need, I want to highlight for the city, some things have been suggested and good questions and good suggestions, but some don't work, like park impact fees. We can't use park impact fees for ice arenas because they weren't part of our needs assessment, right? It would be illegal use, right? So this is GO kind of stuff. So it would be a, a very large burden. I would expect the ice arenas would need $5 to $10 million over the next 10 years of city money to operate them. I think it's pretty reasonable, as a guess. It's a guess, but it's, it's not, it's not off the radar.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris, additional questions?
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much, Eric, for, for coming and talking to us, taking our questions. So you keep emphasizing task force. So first of all, I want to say that, you know, sometimes we in council get, like, you know, it's like the, the Phil Hands cartoons, like, it's which mayor is going to win, when all mayors have been part of this long-term issue. So
Alder, a question?
I'm setting up the question, if you don't mind me, I appreciate it, is, so one thing I want you to talk about is how do you run it differently now? Because I remember listening, I wasn't part of city council, but I remember listening about the shambles and, you know, the want to just shut down the golf courses and take, turn them into housing. How did you guys turn that around, take some credit? And then I'll ask some other questions, I guess.
Well, I mean, the task force, and I think the big difference here, because this is, we're getting, when you, there's ideas around like having a task force or something, I get why that sounds good. Golf, I don't want to project here under the, the current mayor, what her thoughts were, but we had a problem, and we own her thoughts were, but we had a problem and we owned that problem, right? It was a problem we owned that was hitting our general fund books on the backend. So we had to take an action. It was a thoughtful action, but an expensive action. The task force took us nine to 10 months. I would put it in the three to six hundred staff hours. I'm trying to remember how much time I spent on it, a couple hundred probably. But that task force did come up with good results. It did answer a question of should we have municipal golf or not? And that was a diverse task force, and it answered that question authoritatively. It pointed us towards equity and inclusion opportunities, more sustainable land management partnerships, focus on customer service, you know, diversifying our revenue streams. It also actually, by the way, recommended to get rid of golf as an enterprise and make it just a park service. So not all task force recommendations are implemented, and I'm kind of glad they weren't in some ways. But what did we actually do? Focus on customer service, get lucky as heck. I mean, now, I wanted to, that's why I can't take all the credit. Our staff has done a phenomenal job, but it had, we had to get really lucky. The Kaiser donation and the COVID bump in use, and by the way, that COVID bump was only possible for golf to win when we had product to sell. That's what scares me about the ice arenas when I talk about them or hear people talk about them. There's no new product to sell. I don't think you're selling two AM ice time.
Yes. Yeah. So that brings me to the next thing, because I thought that was interesting that you said that is, you know, there's no product to sell. So, I mean, this is as good as it gets with this arena. And then we're talking about arenas around the county and country, actually, that are, you know, got two, you know, two, three sheets of ice. They got, you know, bar, they got restaurants, they have hotels, you know, they have all sorts of stuff. So have we looked at that as an economic impact, as far as you know, from your perspective through parks?
So parks itself doesn't do economic impact studies for regional sports complexes. We do partner and work with the Madison Sports Commission on a regular basis, just to kind of keep abreast of potential different destination tourism, sports amenities, right? I, I know they, I would, you would have to reach out to them to get their thought on what is most prioritized. I can tell you, where, where ice falls in that prioritization, I can tell you it's not at the top. At the top of things that they have recommended, the data and studies say are long field, like, so soccer, ultimate frisbee, football, kind of long field complex development, indoor court facilities, so basketball, volleyball, pickleball even, or, and/or softball, baseball complexes. Those are the three that there is some evidence of serious, real, tangible, or more significant evidence for real economic return in a market like Madison. And the sports commission studied that a number of times over the years. I'm not saying ice isn't on that list. I just don't recall where it falls. We, we've been out of the ice business for a while, and we weren't looking to get back in.
Okay. And then the last question that I wanted you to just touch on, you had talked about the roof in 2017 and whatnot. You know, that, why didn't that get fixed, these problems get fixed, when they were given money? No matter what mayor did the contract, I really don't care. It's not about the mayor, it's about the community.
I can't, I can't answer that question with certainty. What I can say is this. Any, we have experience in this in parks, unfortunately. Anytime you have aging facilities with serious capital needs, you often find that all the small fixes cost a little more than you'd like, and you end up having to prioritize and triage is a good word, triage where your repairs and focus are. I can't, and at the time, to be clear, in 2017, when I toured with some folks from MI, the roof was a growing concern, but it wasn't the primary concern. The HVAC, water issues, like on the, there are some other things that did get repaired, from my understanding. But I think the underlying tension is if you've had a facility that hasn't been invested in for a long time, there's a lot wrong with it. And all those little repairs end up being more expensive and more challenging than you would think.
And I guess I'll just walk close with this, and you may not be able to answer this, and I did that, asked this at the economic development, so I actually do know the answer. But do you know what, were the funds ever audited as far as what, you know, where, where they went, what was spent, what was done, what was not done? Have we kept our fingers on it because we're kind of in the public realm of we want to keep ice arenas open forever? So did we, did we, did we follow the money?
The parks' vision did not have any role in following the money or auditing or releasing the funds. I, I can't speak to that.
Okay. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, additional questions?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I, I basically, and you may have answered this, Eric, but I basically wanted to just ask you, you know, I'm pretty direct. How would you feel about managing something like this ice arena? That's just a general question. Did you answer that already pretty much?
I don't know. I answered it completely directly. How would I feel? It depends, it depends how much this council wants to pay. And not me. But how much, how much is going to be available operationally? I mean, the, the underlying tension, like I described, you have a, you have a, you have a facility, two facilities that are not currently profitable or not clearly profitable, certainly not able to recover enough to do their capital needs. So you have a capital stack issue, you have an operating issue. For us now, we have a talent issue, right? We, there'd be a lot of need for that kind of transitional phase. So certain, certainly in that transition, there's going to be a loss. Is it possible? I believe our team can do almost anything. Is it advisable? I think we have a lot of priorities in Madison Parks. We need a lot of engagement in our park and open space plan. I think most of you have stuff in your district that needs to get done in parks that hasn't been. So adding a ten million, you know, five to ten million dollars of capital needs into our capital budget alone scares me.
Yeah. Okay. And the other, I was going to cut out, because the other thing you do is to pool, right? That is to pool.
Yep, yep.
How does, tell me, is that profitable or what's?
Certainly not. The pool is certainly not profitable. And that's okay, in my opinion. But it, it's, it's cost profile isn't that, in a good year, two seventy thousand, two hundred and seventy thousand dollar loss, and in some of the tougher years, maybe closer to four. And then all the capital needs, which, again, hugely wonderful generous donation, but that donation is now over 20 years old. We've put, we've put about one million dollars back into that facility. That's one of the facilities I'm very proud of our team for what they've done. That facilities assessment work, we're doing that really well at the pool. And so we relined the pool the last couple of years, right? We've done inspections on the slides. We've done some other enhancements. So we're keeping up with it. But that pool in general, a way to think about it, is something in the neighborhood of three, three to four hundred thousand dollars a year on average in, in operating, and probably a quarter million dollars in capital is really what, over the long-term life will be. We don't have anything big coming, but that's what it'll look like.
Okay. And then one thing, since I've known you, Eric, or a perfect example was the parking issue. You, you like to study things before you dive into them, which I do appreciate. So that's, that's all I have for you. I kind of know you, you want to at least make sure you got some, some ideas of what the cost is going to be and what's it going to cost us and what we're going to need. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington-Mckinney, additional questions?
Yes. Eric, thank you, Madam Mayor. Eric, my question centers around your last statement when you were asked about the pool. And you, I think you said the pool is not profitable, but it has other benefits. Am I summarizing correctly or incorrectly? Was that what your thought is?
It certainly does have many, many community benefits, yes. I don't know if I said it that way. That's very articulate of you to restate it for me. But yes, it's, it's got many, many benefits for our community. But it does, in fact, require subsidy.
Okay. Let me hear that again. It, it has many benefits for the community, but it does require city benefits?
City subsidy, yeah. The city, I mean, we, we own it, we operate it, so we pay all the bills, and the money we collect from the users is less than what we spend.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze, questions?
Yeah, Eric, at the beginning, you talked about the reggae analysis in order to get everybody on the same page, in order to move projects forward, to have that great result that you, you and your staff do. Can you just elaborate how important that is?
I was, I was, I was, Alder, I was speaking to the, the recommendations on equity inclusion in the golf task force report. I think it's very important to be thinking about that and always focus on it. To be clear, the golf enterprise has never undergone any formal equity analysis. The Glen project didn't either. I, I don't recall, we did on, we did, I shouldn't say that, that was a lie. We did on some stuff around the movies and programming, go through some equity planning. But the, the task force itself didn't recommend a, an equity analysis. It recommended a focus and intentional work to, to provide more and intentional inclusion, and actually protected Yohara in many ways. If those who recall that, Yohara was on the docket to all be closed potentially, by the task force recommending. But it was recommended against that based on the community engagement around equity inclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So it has been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there discussion? Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all the folks who came out and spoke tonight. And if any of the kids who spoke earlier are watching this, it's time for you to go to bed. But we really appreciate your input and the discussion, the discussions that took place tonight, the testimony, the testimony that's taken place at previous committees. I also want to thank staff for all the hard work that they put in, that Director Mick Ljudziewski's staff has engaged, the hours spent working with these two entities, Madison Ice Inc. and East Madison Ice Collective. Director Mick Ljudziewski posed the question to us in so many words that I think is self-evident. And the question is that should indoor ice year-round stay available in Madison? I think the consensus of this body is that it should. Then the question comes down to whether that ice should be city-owned, or should it be privately held? There are, the solution before us requires no revenue commitment or additional costs to the city. It allows the operation of the ice arenas to remain in nonprofit hands. This talk about a public-private partnership, however, would require city investment. I've heard talk or mention of ten million dollars for a new capital investment, but I've also heard fifty million dollars in Janesville. And that's just starting new, building a new arena by the airport, by some other place. Perhaps property could be donated, but it would not be cost-free. And then the operating costs we hear would certainly not be zero. That seventy-five-year-old woman in the line at the grocery store worried about her property taxes, if this becomes a city-owned operation, her property taxes will go up. The budget for the parks, if the parks were to take this on, their operating budget would indeed go up. The capital investment borrowing, the money paying on the debt of ten to fifty million dollars would have to be paid back. The interest on that would have to be paid back in property taxes. It's not a, a matter of, oh, if the city could take this on, we could do it at a no-cost proposition. Staff have looked at this diligently and have determined that it makes interest to maintain, if not increase, distance between the city and the owners of these two ice arenas. And I agree. Regarding inclusivity and equity and diversity, we've heard that adaptive skating programs that are offered at Hartmire are unique in the state. In fact, apparently unique in the neighboring states in the Midwest as well. That differently-abled, neurodiverse young people who otherwise would not be able to participate in this sport are welcome at the, at Hartmire, and I assume at, at the West Madison Ice Arena as well. We know that there are subsidies for children who are on free or reduced lunches, that there are programs to be able to provide access to these ice sheets so that they're affordable. This is a nonprofit operation that takes diversity, equity, and inclusion seriously. It observes the values that we hold as a city. I think it's incumbent on us to support this proposal, to move forward with it, to charge the Economic Development Division and the city attorney's office to come up with this master agreement, according to the resolution. And I encourage my colleagues to vote yes in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington-Mckinney, discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There were two hundred and five registered speakers. Five of them were from District Twenty. But this is not about, this is really about releasing the debt. We don't know what it would cost for Madison, the city of Madison. We have some estimates. I was unable to tour Hartmire because it was, it was closed, but I did tour the area with Alder Latimer-Burris. The rushing into this proposal, as it was originally presented, was a disservice, I believe, to, to the, what we have seen and heard from those families who use the center, and they have said so much that we have heard tonight, and I appreciate hearing that. I did have an extensive conversation with the incoming president, and I intend to continue having those conversations. And she really impressed me, and I know how important this, these facilities are. But I also heard the statement by Mr. Elts when he said, talked about the, the swimming pool. The swimming pool has tremendous community benefits, but it does cost the city to be for operational. And for public content, I just want to add, these are the things that are landing in my mind. The city of Madison has a rainy day fund and a budget reserve that this city uses in times of financial hardship. The city just passed a referendum. Madison is projected a rainy day fund of over one hundred and four million dollars by the end of 2024, which is 25% of the city's overall budget. That is the highest percentage of reserves since 1995. A twenty million dollar budget surplus is expected to boost the rainy day fund to a thirty-year high. The need for a publicly accessible recreation area has been clearly expressed tonight, and it could not be expressed in more explicit terms. The repairs for the, for the Hartmire Center, it is, it's critical. And when I did the drive-through with Alder Latimer-Burris, those repairs were pointed out. And talking with those repairs were pointed out. And talking with Laura, Laura, she talked about those repairs needed and the cost of those repairs. But is this the only option that can benefit the city residents and skating community? Is there not a win-win, a long-term win-win? Yes, but we've been losing money in this assessment since, and I don't know the date, but we've been losing money in this city partnership for an extended period of time. But my question is, is that as we go into 2025, can we do better? The Goodman Pool is accessible to all races. When we look at equity and all of that, it provides a community benefit. The city, it's costing the city some money, but when you compare what it can do for the community, it outweighs, I believe, the cost. On the West Side, we are looking at an increase in juvenile whatever. But there is no place that the West Side students, juveniles can go. Will they all do skating? They may not do all skating. But I would like to see a facility that can expand opportunities for the community, that'll be a community-wide benefit. And so I have a problem with rushing this through. I think that the recommendations that were made in that very long email, we're not going to be able to do that. But what of those, when I asked the question, what are the three top things that can be done? And how can we begin to explore this? And I'm not going to be able to support this, and I'm hoping that there would be some referral that we can really take a look at this, because I believe the city has a responsibility. I believe the investors have a responsibility. I hear what city partnerships have not been successful, but this is one of an opportunity where the benefit to the community is great. And for us not to explore that, I think that that would be a waste. And I think that we should take a look at what are all of the other alternatives? And have we brought everything to the table? So I am not going to be able to support this, because I don't think that we have done the due diligence to look at what can we do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Fedever?
I just want to take a moment to point out to my colleagues that earlier this evening, we approved over $16 million in capital improvements for Rindell. Why did we do that? Because we felt we needed that community asset, that our community deserves it. Why is that so different than a loan repayment? It's just nomenclature. We're still investing in the community with both of these proposals. $16 million is going to add to the debt service, and there's also a very large operating cost to that one. And we are struggling to figure out how we're going to manage that in the years to come. This proposal actually removes us from future challenge. You can call it a giveaway, but really, it's a deal for the city. It's a deal to be able to invest in our community, to invest in the young people who were here tonight, particularly, I mean, it is the only sled, Madison Ice Arena is the only sled hockey team in the state, as far as I know. That's incredible. Think about that in terms of diversity. Think about what that brings to our community. Why wouldn't we want to invest in this?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, we've heard a lot of different perspectives on this issue. And obviously, it's a tough one, because this thing has been kicked down the can, what, since 2004, and then 2011. And then we could say that it's, you know, it's not a gift. But the fact of the matter is, the loan hasn't been repaid. It's still debt services on it, and nobody really knows the value of this city asset of the property. I just think this is something that we need to take the time to do a study, look at it from all angles, and make a reasonable decision on, is this an asset that the city should be operating at cost, or is it something that we're going to keep halfway, we're going to be back here three years from now? Because certainly, the agreement that was originally made and then redone again in 2011 didn't happen, and now here we are again. So I really think we should not be rushing this decision. I think we need to be looking at all the options from appraising the property, what kind of asset it is, and make an informed decision. What's the urgency tonight? Even if we took one of the proposals, we're still talking about six months to even longer before we know really what we're going to do, and hoping that in three years, that some entity can raise the money. So I can't support this. I am one of the biggest supporters of youth sports, clearly in the city, and I understand that. But we wanted to keep operating, but I just don't see, I think we need to really look at what's the best, what's in the best interest of the city and of our city residents. And I'm not convinced that this proposal is doing it. And it is sort of a bite back in the face at our taxpayers. It really is. So I can't support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Uguir?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is on this resolution. And when I first heard about the situation, it wasn't going to be there. As I have said in my blog and to the media, my inner Ebenezer Scrooge led me, said, great, let's grab these things, let's put up some affordable housing. And I figured the quickest way to get there and to have a convincing story about that was to prove, as I suspected, that the operating finances of Madison Ice Inc. or the likely operations of East Madison Ice Collective would show that they weren't viable. So I asked for a lot of statements. Now, I suppose as the days get shorter and the nights get longer, a lot of people like to curl up in front of the fireplace under blankets or maybe on bed and get into a good mystery or something like that. I like getting into financial statements. So, not that they're the most detailed or clear statements, but looking at those, I concluded that, in fact, with a little stretch, that these operations could be financially viable as an operation, could, over time, build up the kind of maintenance and security reserve that they should have to be successful, to be able to withstand. And so I had to conclude that I wasn't going to kill it that way. And then, just being curious, certainly got into and appreciate all of the discussions that we had with the current management and boards of Madison Ice Inc. and the board for East Madison Ice Collective. But I think the really, as it's been mentioned here, the real story there and its contribution to Madison are the stories in the many letters that we started receiving, not just for those in the public comments tonight, but that have accumulated over the last month and a half. And particularly, the stories of what these have meant to children, especially children who have to deal with various issues. It certainly convinced me to at least put my name on this so we could bring it forth for discussion. I deal, in the way I think about things, primarily in probabilities. What's the probability that these organizations, under this kind of deal, will be able to operate efficiently and viably and build up a reserve? And I'll say, it's over 50% in my mind, looking at the finances. Maybe it's 70 or 75%. It's not certain. But it's a possibility. What's the probability that they'll be able to raise the $3 million, or maybe it's a $3.5 million by the time they get around to it in terms of inflation, for the kind of work that needs to be done? We haven't mentioned a number. But, you know, we'll have to have some money raised by Madison Ice Inc. to be able to handle what happens to happen on the West Side. And it's not 100% that they'll be able to do that. And that's why I really like, let's call them the guardrails that have been put into this proposal, to make sure that the city still has options, still has recourse and so forth, if those things, which we hope and pray for, don't in fact happen. We can still consider, I can still bring my Ebenezer Scrooge back later, if that's necessary, so that we can look at the other things. There's one way to be absolutely, or let's say 90% certain, nothing's certain, that we could really do something with these that really had a positive financial impact on the budgets that are continuing, that will continue to be a real challenge in coming years, and that's to take them back, put out requests for project and sell them for probably market-rate apartments, and probably get much. We've talked about, well, how much, what are they really worth? Well, actually, we have a pretty good idea. If you listened or tuned in on the presentations at the neighborhood meeting up on the northeast side that was put together very well by Alder Latimer-Burris, we do know what comparables are in those immediate areas. This land is worth a lot. So we certainly could have an impact and bring that money in. But is that the right thing to do? One thing, when I look at probabilities that I really never took serious, seriously, was taking them back and operating them. I think the probability of running a major deficit, adding to our tax challenges and so forth, as has been eloquently said by others here tonight, is very high. What is the cost of waiting and trying to look at something else, tweaking this thing, having this commission or that special group look at this and so forth? Time is ticking. Things will go on. This is something that we can do now. It will take six months to bring it out. We may find at the end of six months that we can't put it all together, but we can get going tomorrow on an approach that has a reasonable chance of success. Let's approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of things. I do appreciate all of the people that came out and have come out on a rushed timeline, as this was already supposed to go through council by December 10th, if you all remember that. You get introduced, it was going to finance and back within two weeks. So I appreciate all the things that the various people have said, that for the, you know, I called them the ice arena people. And I asked if that was okay to say that. They said, yeah. I appreciate all the different testimony about the skills learned, about, you know, family and discipline, the value of teamwork, friendship, valuable lessons, the physical development acceptance, that it really becomes a community. I mean, I was in the swim and diving community, and we were the bad news bears as a Goodman team. We were the most diverse team in the city. And when I saw, you know, we had diversity, not only with, you know, body types and race and, you know, abilities and whatnot. And we did hit race hard. When you saw black and brown girls and boys bouncing up on the board, I know that all the people that were swimming at Goodman Pool are going to see in the years that they can do this. So I get that. I also get that this is a generational asset. I didn't think I had any connection to the ice arena, and I forgot, oh, I did speed skating, probably here when, you know, Eric Hayden was skating, and my sister went to school, you know, graduated from West with him, and they both went on to Stanford. And my nephew is a hockey player out in California, and I'm wondering if there's that connection there. So I get it. And I'm a historical person, so I like history. I see the building as like touching the gold star, right? You touching what people have, the people that have been there before have done. We've made Olympians, we've made NFL players. We've certainly influenced hockey on the college level. All of that said, I still think to myself, is this the best solution for the ice arena people, for the community at large, and for the city? And every single time that I come up with that, the answer is no. I have talked to, I have spent a lot of times, I've said the hours, I have talked to so many people, and trying to go beyond just, you know, one side or the other. If you like this mayor, you don't like this mayor. You know, I talked to the board of directors, their board of directors, both boards, people that used to sit on the board, and I've gone through it. And no, everybody was like, yeah, we can do something better, but, you know, we're going to be dealt with the city. We don't know if it's going to ever happen, you know? And if you really talk to people, you'll hear them say that, you know, we want a facility that's a little bit better, but, you know, we have to have faith in this facility right here. Right? Because that's as good as it gets. We've got to take what we can get, right? So I don't think, the reason I'm concerned about this is because this is a final disposal. And it's not fair to compare it to Rindell, because Rindell Park Imagination Center has been 16 years, and it's been vetted. It's gone through task forces. It's done all those different things. And then the other trick in this is the entire spin from the beginning, and it's something that probably caused a lot of conflict between, you know, me and even, you know, some of the people with, you know, on the various boards, is that that is assuming, the assumption that was made that we're going to shut this down. I haven't heard anybody that I talked to say, we're going to shut this down. We're going to close this. That is spin. In every single meeting, we've said, we like ice arenas, they're important, they have a history. Yeah, I may not be into ice skating or golf, but I'm into swimming and diving, you know? For 10 years, I was friends in that friends, part of the Friends of the Goodman Pool supporting diving. And yet, if you ask me, as a Friends group, should we be running Goodman Pool? There's not a chance. And there's people that were business owners, wealthy, had donations. We had a woman donate. The reason that the Goodman Pool subsidizes, somebody gave us a big donation, right? So we're here, we're moving fast. We wouldn't even have this information, yes, yet, if we had just continued on a fast track. So I'm going to try to standpoint, and to standpoint, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read something that I sent around, because I've kept my mouth shut about my opinion on it, especially because in the beginning, including my own colleague accused me of being in somebody's pocket, and, you know, you know, I was using this person's talking And, you know, you know, I was using this person's talking points and I, you know, wasn't asking questions. So I said, okay, I'm going to go full blast. And I did 80 hours. I know that I've read more than my counselors. I know that I've asked more questions. I know that it's almost become annoying. But I think we can do better. If I had my way, I think we should table it. And we should send it back to EDC and look at, should we even do a task force? Because when you go through, and if you had watched the EDC meeting, which I'm not sure how many people on council have, I can guess, and I think it's going to be pretty low, you would see business people, people like Susan of Culvers, that donates money to the Hart Meyer's Arena, that has her advertising there, questioning if this is the best deal? Is this as good as we can get? And we ignored, when we got to finance, the suggestions that they had. Business people, these are all business people that have successful businesses that are looking at things. And they couldn't believe it. They were surprised at all of the questions that we had, including, how much is the land worth? So, my understanding is when we do decisions like this, and this is a $12 to $15 million decision, when you go the value, when you consider the value of the land, you consider the value of, you know, the forgiveness and all that's happened. And I'm not even saying we shouldn't work with the MIC. We shouldn't go back and work with Madison Ice Arena. That defaulted three years ago. I'm not even saying that. What I'm saying is, let's not substitute ourselves in as the best judge and jury of the situation, given that we know that most people on council have not spent 80 hours on it, and probably haven't spent more than an hour, and may have gotten talking points from other people of what to say. Let's send it back to the Economic Development Committee to see if we should do a task force with the idea in mind that we will have an Ice Arena. We are not going to shut it down on the kids. And we don't want to give the North Side, you know, second-class product. We want to have pride on the North Side. There are so many different factors that need to be considered. When people ask me, what do you think? I think we don't know enough. And we are not having experts make this decision. We're doing it on an emotional spin that we're going to shut down the Ice Arena. If I had asked all of those 150 people that came and testified, which I listened to their testimony through three different hearings, if I had said to them, what if we guaranteed we were not going to shut it down? Then you'll get them to open up and say, oh, well, you know, this facility over here does this, and we go over here and do that. The one thing that I appreciate about Goodman Pool, because we were the Bad News Bears, and it took us a while to get points on the board, and we did it. We did it. We came second all-city, when nobody expected us to get out of the gate. Is that when they came over to our pool, we were not embarrassed. The city had a beautiful pool. And they said, oh, Goodman has a beautiful pool. And, oh, maybe these kids can dive. So, with that, I'm going to do a motion to table it and send it back to EDC to look at, should we do a task force on this? I support ice hockey. I just don't support any kind of spin like this. I just can't do it. Because I'm not convinced. And I don't want to set the Ice Arena people up for failure. And then, their board of directors leaves in 10 years. And then, we can either take the property back, or by then, I'm pretty sure that we will not have any means to take it back. So, that is a motion.
Although the motion's not in order, you can't make a motion to table and to re-refer at the same time.
Okay. So, Attorney House, could you help me out here, knowing what I want to do? I want to get, what is the best option? I want to be able to have some group look at it that's not, and not on an emotional level.
Alder, who is it that you would like to look at it?
I think the Economic Development Committee would be the best to look at it. You know, I think that, I mean, if, so if I would do the, I mean, I would probably send it to, excuse me, Parks Economic Development. As I understood in the past, they did a subcommittee, and they spent some time looking at, just in one of these years, I don't know the year, don't have me say what year, because I can't think of it right now. But one of the years, they had a subcommittee, spent some time studying it and making recommendations. I shouldn't, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So.
Thank you.
It sounds like you may just be thinking about a standard motion to refer or re-refer. So the ordinance is required, of course, that we have dates for the referrals and dates for it to come back to the council. And also, when a referral motion is made from the floor, it is supposed to include a reason that you are referring it to that body. In other words, what are you looking for out of that body that is not already considered?
Alder, I'm going to let you formulate your motion in the proper format and go on to additional discussion. Alder Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to make this long, but I am going to second Alder Evers. I almost say Evers. Her fault over there. No, Alder Evers remarks on regards of the people that the Ice Arena is serving. I think there is an equity as we provide services that are specialized for specific needs and also for low-income families, as has been discussed before. I also echo the comments of Alder Viver on regards to the investment in the community. And I want to, especially in the investment of the youth, I want to remind the body that just a couple of years ago, we had a similar situation, which was a private sale. It wasn't as complex as we have here. But we had in front of us the last, if I'm not mistaken, skating rink on the city being sold by a private entity to a developer. And in that case, we had a community that really wanted that youth space for them to do the sport. This is in the ally drive area where we have a, you know, it's an NRT area where we have a lot of needs, where we are constantly being asked, we don't have enough spaces for a youth to go and, you know, get together. So, it was a hard decision to approve that development. But again, we had no control over that sale. It was a private sale. But we already have seen what it looks like to take a space that was intended for youth enjoyment and family enjoyment and being sold for an affordable housing entity, as Alder Gary was mentioning before. That can happen today. There's no restrictions on those deeds. Anyone can come and make an offer that can be refused, and the Ice Arenas can be sold. Nobody's threatening to close the Ice Arenas. But the reality is that the deal that we currently have in front of, that we have before this one, has zero restrictions on that land. And this new deal actually takes care of that deed and takes care and ensures that the locations are maintained for sports usage and for a nonprofit to operate that facility. Then, the last thing I want to say, again, I feel it's extremely irresponsible for any of us to consider any idea of bringing back these Ice Arenas for the city to operate them, to bring back in a service, a new service, after we just passed a referendum asking people to support the needs of the city to maintain current service levels. So, to me, we already know what it looks like to take away spaces for the youth. And we also know that this is going to cost us more money. So, the third option here is the package that has been put together by staff and that contains multiple safeguards in it. And I will be supporting that package. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I sent addition to the resolution. Hopefully, everybody saw it. I just put in there, let it further resolve that a comprehensive racial analysis shall be conducted to identify potential disparities, which specific recommendations for corrective action to be incorporated in the implemented plan. And the findings, and that the findings for the analysis will be publicly shared in an accessible format to ensure transparency and community engagement. So hopefully, everybody got that. And this clause ensures that the racial equity analysis is integral to the process. Actional steps are developed, and the community is kept informed and involved. Another reasoning for this is that I called Tom, and I spoke with him about the hours of operations for the public. And I was amazed that they don't really have that much time for the public to use their facility. And that was a major concern, except for certain programming. I think if we're going to invest in this, as far as this forgiveness, I think it's important that this facility is also has a racial analysis in order to ensure that everybody has a chance to use it. It's not even close to the hours that, when you compare it to the Imagination Center, will have Monday through Friday, you know, operational hours. I think we should just take in depth a look at having this racial analysis done to ensure that, like I said, all youth get to use it. So, I just wanted to make sure that if my colleagues can please look at, you know, having this incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. So many things have come up since I raised my hand. But I wanted to sort of take a big-picture approach based on some, many years of experience dealing with city-owned properties. So when I first heard about this project and talked to Alder Amani about it, I urged her to apply a community benefits lens. And I think it's been clear tonight, from the outpouring of young people and parents and coaches and others, that this, these facilities are really key to many young people's excitement and fun and community and family events, et cetera. We all see, we all saw that and knew it from the earlier emails. But what I really want to think about is, okay, here's a building that clearly the city owned at, for some point, and didn't take care of it. And then other people owned it and didn't really take care of it. And it needs a new roof. So if our community benefit is to ensure Ice Arena, Ice activities, Ice sports, then that roof and that HVAC is number one. It's like the priority. And if we want that continued dysfunction, we need to deal with that. Of course, I, being that little planning geek, I was totally entranced by the idea of, what could we do here instead of what's already here? And of course, I could imagine, you know, a multi-use sports facility, maybe housing on top. I mean, it's not a really big site, but, you know, you get my drift. Like, wouldn't that be cool? So not just maybe a specialized sport, you know, maybe less specialized now than we first thought, but still somewhat of a specialized sport with other kinds of uses that would be to fit the, you know, Oscar Mayer plan for a destination. And that would serve all the new housing that's coming. And so, you know, I'm ready to, I was ready to go there. But you know what? That will take 10 years at least. So, for 10 years, all the maintenance of this building, and I don't really know enough about the West Building to talk about it. So I'm just a Hart Meyer. I'm an East Sider. That's my perspective, so please excuse me. But nothing's going to happen for 10 years. Nothing, really. And not that nothing happens, but people like Amani will spend $80, 80 hours regularly to figure out how to do this grand idea, or whatever the grand idea is. And so meanwhile, we have a facility that needs help and a lot of hundreds of people that are ready to use it. So, I guess, and I'm more practical now. The highest and best use might be something other than what it is. But we have this facility that serves a lot of people. We find value in this purpose. How are we going to ensure that it continues? Do we want to own it? I don't think we do. Do we want to have some kind of partnership? Well, maybe, maybe not. But, you know, we heard from staff that wasn't their recommendation. So then, the option is the one before us. And it has, it has like protections in it. It has, you know, if you don't do this in three years, it comes back to the city. Or, and this, and at that point, if somebody want to change it to something totally different, they could come back to the council and make the case. And I just, Alder Viver mentioned like what else was on the agenda tonight. And she mentioned the Imagination Center. But another thing that was on was the reconsideration of the pilot paid parking in Parks project that I came up with at Finance and it passed, that caused such consternation. So, part of the answer that we decided to, like, just study is that Park staff said, no, we can't really handle doing this extra project. And you heard Director Knapp talking about, you know, we don't really want to, like, be in charge of this. You heard several Alders talking about, how is Parks going to manage this when we're like trying to like manage our operating budget? So I really do think we have a, maybe not the perfect, but the good. And I have now like come to appreciate, and have used it as a mantra, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I think to move forward makes sense. I don't think I will be supporting referring it to economic development. But, you know, if people want to do that, I just think that we want to fix the roof. That's what our goal should be. And if there's some way to do that and then keep talking, if that's what people really want, there, maybe there's some language that would do that. I don't really know. But, so, yeah, I just want to remind you that the city is not the best caretaker of facilities. I mentioned Garver earlier. Like, we didn't, we didn't fix that roof either. And it was open to the elements for many, many years. And I don't really want us to be in charge of so many buildings that we don't take care of. It's just, it's, we're not good stewards of a lot of these buildings. And so to me, it's important to be a good steward of a building. And if we're not going to be able to manage that, then let's not go there. So, all that to say, I'm supporting this, the resolution, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. And I am sleepy at this point. But I just want to say, first and foremost, shout out to all the kids and parents and their, you know, everybody who came tonight and spoke in favor or against it. Because either way, we learned something new about the folks in our community tonight. And then I just want to say, having served on EDC prior to me becoming Alder and still now, EDC really does a really great job of asking 1,000 questions, especially Wayne, and I'm guessing especially Sue that night. I do want to say too, I trust Matt's work on this as well. I'm not questioning what he put together. I think, over the years that I've been on EDC, I just know whatever was put before us or came before us, we spent a lot of time questioning. And most of us go to Matt separately or someone else in Economic Development and just, you know, answer our questions outside of our meetings. So I'm confident that that group of people spent a lot of time on this, even outside of that meeting. And if I remember correctly, it passed with UDT and its support. The other thing I want to say about the Ice Arenas, when we first got this, all I thought about was climate change. I was like, you know, if we didn't have these arenas in the wintertime, how would these kids get in any practice? Because, you know, it wasn't cold enough for local ice to freeze up for them to be outside practicing. And what I learned today is that these kids, you know, in the 200, 300-plus emails we got, it's not just about the physical activity. A lot of it is like mental health related. You know, I was talking to some kids in a corner, and some of these kids are dealing with depression. They have a coach who's dealt with depression. And kids need access to spaces like that. So for me, this, it's also about, this is supplemental to what is happening slowly but progressively on the east. but progressively on the East Side. So eventually, we will have this new library. I got to chat with some kids over there from Sandberg Elementary along with their adult. And as that mom said, like, there isn't anything over there. So for me, this ice rink will be, you know, still complementing this new library to come. It complements the kids who are attending Sandberg Elementary. It complements the newly-formed Neighborhood Resource Team, which is the Sandberg Motel Quarter, NRT. So I see it as a compliment. It, I actually don't even understand why folks wouldn't support this, like, initially, without even, you know, 50 hours of details. Because at the end of the day, like Marsha was saying, it's a community benefit, and it's something that we need to do in order to serve the greater good. Yeah. And if we didn't have it, I'm not sure if it was Regina or not, but somebody, if we didn't have it and we needed to figure out what would we do and offer these young people, we barely can make a decision on funding the current programs we fund. And so what I have found is that oftentimes when we're saying, like, oh, this thing needs to be slowed down, there needs to be a task force, there needs to be a committee. All of this is just sort of like busy words for not ever doing anything about it. It just sits for like 10 years. We're 16-plus years out and don't have a library in District 17 and 12. How long did it take to build the market? So task force, committee, slowing this thing down, in Madison terms, equals 10-plus years. So do we really want these kids to do what kids were doing in my district, which is referred to the Imagination Center as the imaginary center? So I don't want to, and especially that young man, that little boy, no. I would not have that conversation with him. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder. Just remind us all to refer to our colleagues by their titles.
I'm sorry, Dr. Vitterver. Dr. Alder Vitterver.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be supporting referral back to EDC. EDC did vote unanimously recommending, but their recommendations were in conflict with one another. One of them suggested that the city retain ownership with long-term leases. And Finance Committee and many in this body don't think that's a good idea. What Finance Committee did do is adopt the one particular recommendation that retaining ownership, if the ownership of the properties are to remain private, that there would be a deed restriction placed on the properties requiring the ownership to be maintained with nonprofit status. Now regarding, I want to say that both Alder Madison and Alder Vitterver made good points, and so did Alder Rommel. A roof needs to be fixed. There are millions of dollars that need to be raised to be able to make repairs and major capital investments in Hartmire. All right. It's also important to remember that the owners of Hartmire rent out to other organizations ice time. And those organizations, we have testimony already engaging in D E I and other inclusion aspects of participation that can be clearly defined as respecting our values about diversity, equity, and inclusion. We heard clear testimony on that. Why would we want to burden the ownership of the nonprofits with somehow trying to prove that they are actually doing what they're already doing? They have the only adaptive skating program in the entire state. The organizations that they rent to are very conscious about participation and making sure that low-income people can participate. And we hear from the people on the board that they're conscientious about how they price access to the ice to be able to maintain affordability so people of different incomes can participate in this recreational activity. Why, when it's so critical and important for us to get a new roof on Hartmire, that we would burden them further than they already are? I am not in favor of any additional amendments at this time or any referral. And I would like to call the question and vote on the resolution.
Thank you, Alder. I did have only, you were the last Alder in the queue, but now there are two additional Alders. Do you wish to move to call the question? There's a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to call the question. Is there objection to calling the question?
Yes.
All right. Well, then we'll go to a vote. So all those in favor of calling the question, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Field?
Aye.
Aye. Figaroa Cole?
Going to give me time to rule an alternative.
Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye.
Ughair?
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Knox?
No.
No. Latimer Burris?
No.
No. Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Miazze?
No.
No. Rommel?
No.
No. Tischler? Aye. Vervier? Aye. Vitterver? Aye. And Wally is excused. That's 15 ayes and four noes. Thank you, Wes.
I have a point of order. I have a point of order, Mayor.
Point of order, Alder. Latimer Burris?
Yeah. I thought that you said, why don't you go work on your alternative? And then we're going to just move it to point of order? I mean, that's what I've been doing when I haven't been on here, so I'm not understanding.
No, Alder, your colleagues have voted to call the question, so we need to move to the question that's before us on the floor.
So what was the point of me going off to do all that when you knew that I was going to raise my hand to come back? Is that to just move it along or what?
No, Alder, if you had rung in before the question was called, you could have made an alternate motion or an amendment, but the question being called takes precedence.
Wow. This is how we're going to play this? Okay, no problem.
The question's been called. What's before us is a motion and second to adopt as approved by the Finance Committee, anticipating disagreement. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And...
Mayor, can I have another point of order? Mayor, can I have another point of order?
Point of order, Alder Miazze?
Yes. I read off amendment that I wanted to the resolution. I don't know why. Is it going to be added or was there?
Alder, you're supposed to do? Alder, you didn't make a motion.
All right. Is it too late to make a motion? That was a reason why I read that off.
It is, in fact, too late to make a motion. As I just finished explaining, the question's been called, and that takes precedence.
All right, Mayor.
Point of order, Mayor?
Alder Knox?
Yeah, I just want to say, it's the discretion of the chair, but there are times when you let a few people in the queue speak, and then there are other times you do not. So I just want to stress to you that you need to add some fairness, because it seems like certain people are always the ones left in the queue.
Alder, I always ask when a call is made to call the question if the maker of the call will defer to the people in the queue.
You don't always ask that.
I do. And in this case, the maker of the original motion did defer, and another one of your colleagues called the question. It was properly seconded, and it was voted on.
Well, I will point out for you on the tape when you haven't done that, okay, Mr. Mayor? So I'm done.
Please don't misgender me. The question...
You don't want me to call you Matt?
Please do not call me Mr. Mayor.
I said, miss. I missed. You were wrong.
I think he said, miss mayor. That's what I heard. Miss mayor, that's correct.
You're all out of order at this point in time. The question before us is adoption. It's been properly moved and seconded, anticipating disagreement. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. Alder Harrington McKinney, a point of order.
Yes. Madam Mayor, my point of order is that the lack of consistency. And I really will cite the last council meeting when I had a point of order when an Alder called me out by name, and you would not allow me to ring in and respond. So there are examples when you have favoritism. And so my point of order is that there needs to be consistency in the chamber, and there's not consistency in the chamber. I lower my hand. Thank you.
Alder, your point is heard but not acknowledged. I do maintain that I consistently ask Alders when they call the question to defer to people in queue. In this case, your colleagues refused to defer. The motion was made and properly seconded and voted on. I'm sorry it didn't go the way you wanted it to.
But point of order, you told me, why don't you go work on it? And you could see that I was making a motion, and then you're going to, we're going to play this game, but that's how it's going to run?
Alder, that's not a point of order, and we've already addressed your point. I will say again, it was your colleagues that voted by a supermajority to call the question. I cannot override that, even if I wanted to.
Hopefully, you're not sending them texts to call the question now, right?
Alder, you're severely out of order at this point in time. I know there's not another point of order. Thank you. The question before us is adoption. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Duncan? Aye. Evers? Aye. Field? Aye. Figaroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Govindarajan? Aye. Ughair?
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
Dane.
You say abstain?
Correct.
Abstain. Knox?
No.
No. Latimer Burris? I don't believe Alder Latimer Burris is on the meeting anymore. Absent. Madison? Aye. Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Miazze?
Aye.
Aye. Rommel?
Aye.
Aye. Tischler? Aye. Vervier?
Aye.
Aye. Vitterver? Aye. 17 ayes, one abstain. With... One no. Oh, sorry, 16 ayes. 16 ayes, one no, one abstention, one absence. With 16 ayes, the motion passes. And that will take us to item 63. Item 63 is Legisstar 86251, reconsideration of the file, which is a substitute amending the Parks Division 2025 adopted operating budget to remove the paid parking pilot and associated revenues and expenditures. And I'd ask the city attorney to just clarify for us the order of events here with the reconsideration.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Motion reconsider can be made. It requires a second. It is not debatable, and it requires a majority vote. So first, there would be a motion reconsider. If that passes, then the council will move back to the original motion. If the motion reconsider fails, then that's the end of the item.
Alder Bennett, point of information.
Is a reconsider vote, reconsideration, is the vote to reconsider up for debate?
Yes.
Okay. And then after, if that vote passes, does that reopen the debate for the vote?
Yes. And just to clarify, the motion reconsider is debatable, but the proper debate is simply whether or not to reconsider it. Not really the merits of the original motion.
Sure. I mean, I just wanted to say that if it is at all helpful for my colleagues, and I hope you all support opening this up for reconsider.
Alder, nothing's before us yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Okay, good. Let you...
We'll get to that. Alder Figaroa Cole?
I'm sorry. Can you clarify how many votes we need for each of the steps?
Just the majority. 11 votes.
For both of the steps?
No. Good point. Motion reconsider, majority vote. The second motion is a budget amendment, 15 votes. Thank you.
All right. So to be the, and there's a restriction on who can make the motion to reconsider.
Correct.
So if you have to have been absent when the item was last considered, or you have to have been on the prevailing side of the vote when the item was last considered. So I will ask at this time, is there a motion to reconsider item 60, excuse me, Legisstar 86251? Alder Bennett?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to reconsider. Is there discussion on reconsideration? Alder Bennett?
Simply put, I was not there, and I'd love to vote.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Rummel, discussion on reconsideration?
I, I, I just want a point of information that Alder Amani got disconnected, and she's trying to reconnect. She says it's not letting her in, so if the clerk could keep an eye out for her efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, all right, the question before us is reconsideration. Is there additional discussion? Seeing none. Uh, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of reconsideration? Seeing no objection, the item is reconsidered and is back before us. So this is a substitute amending the Parks Division 2025 adopted operating budget to remove the paid parking pilot and associated revenues and expenditures. Uh, on the item, is there a motion? Alder Evers?
Uh, moved to approve, uh, the re, the...
Moved to adopt.
Moved to approve.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt. Uh, are there questions for staff? Is there discussion? Alder Evers? Oh, I'm sorry, Alder Rummel, did you have a question for staff?
I, I just want to make, to clarify that the amendment that was made on the floor at the last meeting is part of this motion.
Yes.
Which was to do the, the study.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, question?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, would, would you please, um, say what we're voting on? I'm not, I'm confused with the back and forth, so would you make it clear what this vote is? Thank you.
Yes, Alder, but we, having, uh, so the, the motion to reconsider was successful, so the item is back before us, um, and is, we are in discussion on, um, the substitute motion to, um, um, remove the paid parking pilot from the Parks budget. So that's what's before us, and that's what we'll be voting on. Uh, on the question, Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor, and just briefly, um, I put forth this, this amendment to Alder Rummel's original budget amendment with a view towards addressing concerns that staff had, had made about their resources to be able to execute, properly execute, a paid parking pilot during this time. Uh, staff spoke, Superintendent Knapp spoke, um, Tom Lynch, Director of Transportation, spoke, and the conclusion was that a more collaborative process would accomplish better results and, and free up, uh, Parks from the explicit burden of having to put forth this parking pilot at this time. Uh, I asked my colleagues to support it, it makes sense, let's not put on staff something that they don't feel they have the resources to do at this present moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, discussion? Alder Knox, you're muted.
Yeah, I was just, um, just information that, um, Alder Bures said that she needs a passcode to get in, so just letting you know, she's trying to start getting.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders, Alders in the queue for a discussion on item 63. Alder Rummel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate the effort that was made to amend this proposal and, um, to do a study. Um, as I mentioned earlier in the other topic, I reminded you that this was on the agenda, and I support this effort because it will gather data that we need to determine if this is a viable, you know, to look at our parking assets, as the language of the thing says, and I think that's important. I understand the, the concerns that were raised, but I still think that we have different types of parking situations, and we need to have more information, and this will do it. So I support this.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue, uh, wishing to speak. What's before us is the substitute, uh, budget amendment, removing the paid parking pilot and associated revenues and expenditures, and it does include the request to do a study. It is a 15-vote item. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of, uh, substituted item 63. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Are there any additional introductions from the floor, or are there any announcements? Seeing none. Alder Bennett, it's your turn.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Uh, Alder Curry?
Sorry, I missed the announcement, I was gonna wish Karen, our Chief of Staff, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Karen. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a good morning, everyone.
Happy birthday, Karen.